That the judge took the lead on making sure that we are fully equipped throughout all of our county facilities to have this. But you're right, Commissioner Chesney, I mean, it's all, I see Chief Clack in the back, he's here pretty often and others that are, know how to use these devices in CPR. And it was amazing to see that happen. And if you can imagine, people were text messaging as soon as we broke during that recess, that's much needed recess. And it was, can't imagine what it was like for you to do what you did. For us, it was, there was some trauma to it, was. I mean, it was something hard to see if you're not trained for that. But you did it professionally, you were two seats over. I don't believe in coincidence, I don't. That was truly a blessing to have you there and to be able to do what you did. And everyone else that helped to jump in. So, thank you for all you've done, Chief, thank you.
Chief, I also want to chime in a little bit on it. Can't say much than what's already been said, but I want to thank you for being here. I want to thank you especially for being there at the right time at the right place. I think everything happens for a reason. And it was a gentleman's faith that you were there for him. And we really appreciate this. And with what's happened, the judge has taken, like Commissioner Mottas said, taken the lead on making sure that there's fibrillators where we really need them. And making sure that our people are trained to do, you know, to work with them. So, I want to say, tell you thank you very much, and we really appreciate you, and God bless you.
We have this small certificate, and it is nothing compared to what you have done for us. But we want you to know how very grateful that we all are and how very thankful, I'm sure, we all, I mean, we don't see those kind of things every day. But thank you again, thank you very much.
This is my mom.
Good picture, thank you. One, two, three, one.
Yeah, you're short.
Careful with the short stuff. Take a bunch.
One more, one more, sorry. Two more.
One, two.
Thanks, guys.
No, actually, don't. Don't worry about it. Here you go, ma'am, ma'am.
Got it?
Yeah, thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
More than one, more than one.
Thanks.
Okay, now, another one more.
I was working the roof.
They want to bring the mariachis in first before we do this, yes? Is he bringing them in?
Nope, they didn't give me any.
I don't have, I haven't been given any of the resolutions.
They're right here. We've signed them all, they're right here, if y'all want to separate them and bring them. Sorry. Moving on to item F, adopt the following resolutions, proclamations, or orders. F1, in recognition of Robstown's early college high schools, El Mariachi Sol Rojo distinguished performance at the Texas UIL State Mariachi Festival 2023. And Frances, my executive secretary, is going to read this proclamation as one of her sons is in this group. And we're so excited to have you guys here this morning. Do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If you want to read the proclamation, please.
In recognition of El Mariachi Sol Rojo's distinguished performance at the Texas UIL State Mariachi Festival of 2023, whereas mariachi ensembles from across the state competed for top honors at the 2023 UIL State Mariachi Festival on February 24th and 25th at the Seguin High School Performing Arts Center, whereas 77 schools performed at the state festival this year. Whereas the Robstown Early College High Schools, El Mariachi Sol Rojo, led by directors Charles Cabrera, Miguel Cabrera, and Gerardo Ledezma, was awarded an excellent rating for their distinguished performance at the 2023 UIL State Mariachi Festival. Whereas El Mariachi Sol Rojo's ensemble members include flute, Angel Garza; guitar, Ronnie Downing, Isaac Garcia, Emerald Hernandez, and John Hernandez; guitarone, Jaden Garza; trumpet, Calisa Lerma, Haley Martinez, Damari Munoz, and Brianna Uriegas; biwela, Paloma Calderon; violin, Karina Camacho, Jesse Vazquez, Karina Ibarra, Vicente Ibarra, and Christopher Martinez. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Oasis County hereby recognizes El Mariachi Sol Rojo's musical accomplishments and achievements, and further encourages the citizens of Oasis County to join the court in wishing them all the best in their future endeavors.
We have a motion and a second. I think Commissioner Mottas wants to speak.
Yes, Judge, I have the great fortune to represent Robstown in my precinct. And so, I go to so many events, we had the great ribbon cutting for the new extension there, the new programs that the high school just rolled out a couple of months ago. And of course, Mariachi Sol Rojo was there. And they have made a name for themselves throughout, not only our region, but throughout the state. And so, it's always a great time to enjoy their talent. You see, they obviously have no problem in recruiting members. And they're just a treat to watch. And these are great young people who we hope will continue their musical pursuits. And Mr. Cabrera, Mr. C, we know that you have an excellent music program overall, with your marching band, your drums and percussion, your mariachis and all the others. And I just want to just encourage you to continue to do your good work. Continue to represent not only Robstown, but in Oasis County as you have. You are a pride for us as you go out there and represent us. And I'm just going to say, I was hoping y'all were going to come in singing, I really was. We should have asked for it, but we know also you're on a timeframe. But thank you all for all that you do, and congratulations.
Wait, don't let them off the hook, I wanted to hear that too.
I didn't want to put them on the spot and ask them to come up with something right now. All right.
Does anyone else want to speak? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. And their director wants to speak as well. And we have a certificate, and we'd like to get a photo with you guys before y'all dash out the doors, please.
Okay, first of all, Your Honor, Judge Connie Scott, Commissioner Chesney, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Mottas, and Commissioner Hernandez, we want to thank you for inviting us here today. My name is Miguel Cabrera, I serve as one of the mariachi directors. I do want to also acknowledge my fellow directors, my dad, my boss, Mr. Charles Cabrera, and we also have Mr. Gerardo Ledezma. And we serve as the directors for the Robstown Early College High School Mariachi. So, just to put a little more perspective, Frances did a great job of explaining the process. In January, these students had to perform for a panel of three UIL judges there at Robstown High School. And they had to get a first division, okay? So, they got a first division from all three judges. And then they proceeded to go to the state festival, which happened in Seguin, and they got an excellent rating. The highest rating is a superior, but to come home with an excellent rating from those world-class mariachi judges and educators was really, really awesome. And if I may mention a little bit of perspective on this UIL State Festival, I used to work in Laredo, Texas. That was my first job back in 2005. In 2006, I opened the Laredo Morning Times and it said in article, "One day, UIL will have a UIL State Mariachi Festival." And it's like, mm, whenever. And then the first mariachi festival happened in 2016, which this group has attended ever since. And I just want to mention also my gratitude to Dr. Brad Kent, who's the UIL State Music Director. He's also a good friend of ours for getting this ball rolling, you know, promoting this beautiful part of our culture. You know, mariachi music is really starting to pick up in all parts of the state. This past April 13th, we had a state mariachi, excuse me, a cotton picker mariachi festival where groups as far away as Houston, all the way down to the valley, to Laredo, and everywhere else came over. And we had thousands of fans and mariachi members come to our hometown of Robstown to celebrate this art. So, we want to thank you all for your invite this morning, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we try to get everybody lined up up here so we can? Yeah, we voted. I thought we did. Oh, okay. All those in favor, please say, I thought I said all those in favor say aye. Could have sworn I did that. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Taller guys on the fartherest end. Try to make everybody fit, but.
Got plenty of people that want to do that all the time, it's normal reaction.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I know, man, I mean, not to hear the, I mean, I was really looking forward to hearing you all today. Congratulations, thank you. Thank you very much, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we should, yeah. Whenever they came. But school's almost down now, right?
Thank you. I could have sworn I did. I make my notes for that. On, moving on to item number F2, in recognition of Robstown Early College High Schools' Luna Rosa Color Guard's championship performance. And they're coming in as we speak, and Frances is going to read that proclamation as well. Wow, look at that trophy. Yes. Can I get a motion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If you'll read it now, we'll get that out of the way.
In recognition of Luna Rosa Color Guard's championship performance at the 2023 Texas Educational Color Guard Association Championship Contest, whereas color guards from across the South Texas area competed top honors at the 2023 TECA Championship Contest on Saturday, March 25th, at Hidalgo Early College High School, whereas six color guards performed in the Scholastic Novice Blue class this year. Whereas the Robstown Early College High School Luna Rosa Color Guard, led by director Norma Jean Martinez, by Mariza Torres, was awarded the fan favorite award, first place equipment, first placed design analysis, and first place overall, earning the title of Scholastic Novice Blue Champions at the 2023 TECA Championship Contest. Whereas the Luna Rosa Color Guard members include seniors, Lorena Paredes and Karina Ibarra; juniors, Marisa Aguilar, Miranda Aguilar, Yexlin Cedillo, Elisa Claros Castillo, and Luis Reyna; sophomores, Kirby Hanson, Jaslin Mungia, Juvali Rodriguez, Vicente Ibarra, and Sarah Zamora; freshmen, Mel Flores and Matthew Tames, and eighth grade, Anay Garza, Anissa Martinez, and Natalia Rivera. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Oasis County hereby recognizes the Luna Rosa Color Guard's musical accomplishments and achievements, and further encourages the citizens of Oasis County to join the court in wishing them all the best in their future endeavors.
I think there, Ms. Martinez, did you want to, would you like to say something to us, please?
Good morning. I am Norma Jean Martinez, and I just want to take the time to say thank you for allowing this opportunity for our students to be recognized at this level. I really appreciate it, the hard work, lots of hours invested, and not only in our group, but academically and in other groups that they're involved in. And they still make time to stay committed to what they, you know, set their goals to hit. And here we are presenting our trophies and our plaques and all our banners, so we're super excited. So, hopefully, we can continue in the following years. But thank you so much for this time, we really appreciate it.
Can't we get y'all to come up and we'll do a photo? We're very excited for you all as well, and that trophy looks awesome. I hope you continue to do those. And it looks like you have a mixture of people, we even have some of the mariachis coming in. That's such a good commitment from students to be so involved in their time and effort. So, we're very proud of all of you.
Very good, very good.
Ready? One, two, three.
Save the best for last.
Congratulations.
The drum lines coming in as we speak. So, moving on to item number three, in recognition of Robstown's Early College High Schools Red Star Indoor Drum Lines Championship Performance at the 2023 TECA Percussion and Winds Championship Contest.
In recognition of Robstown Early College High Schools Red Star, were you supposed to have?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Red Star Line, sorry, championship performance at the 2023 TECA Percussion and Winds Championship Contest, whereas drum line ensembles from across the state competed for top honors at the 2023 TECA Percussion and Winds Championship Contest on April 15th at the Seguin High School. Whereas the Robstown Early College High Schools Red Star Indoor Drum Line placed third out of the 10 schools. Whereas the Robstown Early College High Schools Red Star Drum Line, led by band director David Hoxter, also received the fan favorite award at the championship competition. Whereas the Red Star Drum Line members include tenor drum, Kayden Valera, Tyler Flores, Isaac Garcia, and John Hernandez; cymbals, Miranda Aguilar, Samara Lara, and Leila Ramirez; snare drum, Paloma Calderon, Audrey Garcia, and Andrew Martinez. Snare Drum: Paloma Calderon, Audrey Garcia, and Andrew Martinez; Bass Drum: Angel Garza, Jayden Garza, Karina Ibarra, and Sonia Tobias; Props: Elisa Claros Castillo, Elias Diaz, Lee Hinton, Calissa Lerma, Martín Pérez, and Ryan Vázquez; Marimba: Shelby Barera and Jordan López. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County hereby recognizes the Red Star Drum Line's musical accomplishments and achievements, and further encourages the citizens of Nuasis County to join the court in wishing them all the best in their future endeavors.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Congratulations to all of you, and I see there is more of a mixture as well from students that are participating in multi, multi-activities. And the fact that you're able to do that and dedicate your time and still make your grades and be able to play, that's impressive. We hope that you continue, and we're very proud of you. This court thanks you for being here today, and we have another small token of appreciation to present you with as well.
Okay, one, two, three. One more, last one, I promise. One, two, three.
Keep up the good work, guys. Thank you, sir.
Very much. Congratulations. It was a trifecta today, sir. Congratulations.
Do we have another group coming in, or are they here?
No.
Okay. In recognition of Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi's, number four, in recognition of Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi's tennis team for their outstanding season.
Judge, we're gonna, I was gonna table these because they are going to the NCAA tournament literally as we speak, so we're gonna reroute this.
I started to say, they're gonna go on to even better things.
Yeah, we're gonna add more language to their resolution, but what I'd like to do today is just pass the resolution and allow the court, or ask the court to allow me to add some additional language based on their NCAA tournament success. And then, I'm gonna go out and was gonna ask Commissioner Mataz, our Texas A&amp;M University alum, Corpus Christi alum, to go with me and present that on Monday, May 8th, and if he can't, certainly anybody else is welcome. But if that's okay, I'd like to just pass it as is, and then allow the court to let me amend with some additional fluff language, if you will, on how good they do at the NCAA tournament.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And really and truly, read these resolutions. The success that Steve Moore has had as a coach out there is phenomenal. I, besides, I know there's a lot of great coaches out there, but the success that he's had on that program is astounding. I mean, they've had both their tennis teams go into the NCAA tournament, which, that's just incredible. And we're talking with every other Division I school, and they've gone several times, and so he's been a phenomenal coach there. And he just loves Corpus Christi and continues to stay here despite his opportunities to go other places. And the teams themselves have done really well, so I appreciate that, and I'll make sure and present those.
Ms. King's gonna go ahead and read the resolution as it is now. Do you want her, so those here that aren't aware of their accomplishments will at least hear this.
Hey Judge, I think I only have the next resolution, which is for the Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Oh, you don't have the, you pulled those out?
Yeah, I think so.
You pulled it? Yes. Okay. Sorry. I didn't get that notice. Sorry. So the next two, the coach, are we doing that one the same way, pulling it?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion and a vote for that then to?
That was, my intent was to make that a motion for four and five, but if that wasn't clear, then I'll make that one the same motion as the number four.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. So y'all are gonna present those next week after this next tournament? You and?
We're gonna, it's May 8th.
Redo those May 8th.
No, we're just gonna, we're gonna go out and present them, and I'll get everybody to sign them
Okay.
with the additional language, because they leave, well, they're all going home for the summer pretty quick, so I gotta get out there.
Yes. Okay, then moving on to item six, in recognition of the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Do I have a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. None opposed, the motion passes. And Ms. King does have that one, and she is going to read that one. Thank you. Sorry about the confusion.
No problem. In recognition of the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas in Nuasis County, we believe that children thrive in safe, stable, nurturing families within their own communities. Through establishing partnerships with families that capitalize on our collective strength of parents and their children, we can build strong, healthy families in resilient communities where children can thrive. Whereas sadly, child abuse and neglect are still significant public health issues. In fiscal year 2022, 182 children died in the state of Texas due to abuse or neglect. Two children being from Nuasis County. Despite the complex factors that can lead to child maltreatment, it can be prevented. Whereas the Nuasis County Child Welfare Foundation has supported and advocated for Nuasis County children for over 21 years. Along with partnering organizations, the Nuasis Child Welfare Foundation provides services, financial support, and networking tools for children in Nuasis County, and strives to educate and raise awareness of child abuse prevention. Each year, this month of April is dedicated to recognizing the critical work being done across our great county to protect our children. Whereas child abuse prevention is a task that requires daily work and continued education of everyone in our county. Child abuse prevention can be tasked to one, cannot be tasked to one person, agency, or system. We must all work together to strengthen our communities and keep children and families safe. It takes everyone working hard to create positive, healthy environments for future leaders of our great county and state. Now therefore, be it resolved that Commissioners Court of Nuasis County does hereby proclaim April 2023 to be Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Nuasis County, and encourages everyone to learn about the many aspects of child abuse, neglect, prevention, and utilize the systems and networks put in place to protect our children. Together, we can create a brighter future for children and families in Nuasis County, and ensure tomorrow's leaders have the support that they have, need to strive and reach their potential.
Thank you, Ms. King, and I think we all agree very much on this. Is there anyone here with child welfare protection that wishes to speak? Yes.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. My name is Jennifer. I'm with the Nuasis County Child Welfare Board and the Nuasis Child Welfare Foundation. And like the proclamation said, it's not just one person or one organization. So with me here today, I have Monica Alanis with DFPS and some other ladies from DFPS. We've got Foster Angels of South Texas here, A World of Children, Agape Ranch and Harbor. We have 2-on-1. And so throughout our county, it takes multiple organizations that do what we do. It's a task that goes on all year long, but we definitely focus hard in April. I know several of the commissioners have been involved with DFPS and involved with child welfare and has helped us in the past. And so we just want to say thank you for the continued opportunity to be able to present this and educate the public on Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you to each of these organizations for everything you do.
And Judge, I wanted to ask, I know in the past, we've always had big events, multiple events, some at the courthouse and other locations. And are we doing that again? I know everything kind of stopped with COVID, and there's other events that are held. But maybe we can look at next year, and as we're kind of reflecting on this year, but for next April, maybe really kind of?
So we did, we did last Friday have our big Go Blue event. You're right, we used to have it at the courthouse, but with, we used to have it on jury duty day, so we would get the public, but that's kind of faded away, son. So what we've done is we've partnered with La Palmera Mall, and on last Friday, we actually had 10 organizations there, right in the middle of the mall, handing out coloring books and, you know, parenting tips and advice. Casa, along with the organizations that I mentioned, Casa joined us, MCH, and a couple of other organizations. But we do, we would love to have more input from the court. We would love to set up that partnership like we used to have back in the day, because any involvement we can get from the county to try to educate people, we would, we would love to, love to set that up. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for your work.
May we get a picture?
Absolutely, and we have a. Next up, item number seven, in recognition of National Library Week, April 23rd through the 29th, 2023. Ms. King, you want to read that one as well?
Yes, Judge. In recognition of National Library Week, April 23rd through the 29th, 2023, whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. Whereas libraries have been, has long served as a trusted institution for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as populations as they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. Whereas National Correctional Officers' Employees Week in Nuasis County recognizes correctional officers, employees for their role in safeguarding and assisting citizens of Nuasis County by providing safe, secure, and humane incarceration of offenders within their custody. Whereas libraries play a critical role in economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideals for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved by Commissioners Court of Nuasis County, the week of April 23rd, 2023, through April 29th, 2023, is recognized as National Library Week. All citizens are encouraged to visit our local libraries to explore the wealth of resources available.
Thank you, Ms. King. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And Ms. Ider, are you gonna speak about this? Thank you so much for being here this morning.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners, and again, we're very proud and happy to be here, to be recognized as Library Week. We have a lot of functions going on this week. We have Dia de los Niños. We have programs on Thursday, programs on Saturday. And I couldn't do this without the great staff. I only have three of my librarians with me today. I have Crystal, my assistant librarian, and I have Brandy and Garza, and Cynthia Garza, the La Library. And the remainder are at the Keach Library and at the Bishop Library. We have a busload of kids coming in this morning from Driscoll. They wanted to have programming, arts and crafts, and a little bit of STEM technology this morning, so we're doing that this morning. And so we've been very busy and blessed to have many partners, including many partners in Nuasis County. So we couldn't do this without the partners in Nuasis County and all the other partners that help us during programming. And so thank you very much. We appreciate it.
We have this for you as well. Would y'all like a photo too?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, yeah, thanks.
And item number eight, in recognition of National Correctional Officers' Employees Week, May the 7th through the 13th, 2023. If you want to read that, Ms. King?
Yes. Commissioners Court Resolution, in recognition of National Correctional Officers' Employees Week, May 7th, 2023, through May 13th, 2023. Whereas National Correctional Officers' Employee Week was first proclaimed on May 5th, 1984, by President Ronald Reagan, when he signed the Proclamation 5187, creating a National Correctional Officers' Week to recognize the many women who work in jails, prisons, and community corrections across the county. Whereas National Correctional Officers' Employees Week became the official name the first week in May, when in 1986, the U.S. Senate officially changed the name from National Correctional Officers' Week. Whereas National Correctional Officers' Employees Week has been designated as Week of May 7th, 2023, through May 13th, 2023, by the U.S. Department of Justice and the Federal Bureau of Prisons. Whereas National Correctional Officers' Employee Week honors the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel for their service officers and correctional personnel for their service with honor, respect, and integrity, and raises the awareness of the duties, hazards, and sacrifices made by the correctional employee. Whereas National and Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Nuasis County recognizes correctional officers and employees for their role in safeguarding the citizens of Nuasis County by providing safe, secure, and humane incarceration of offenders within their custody. Now therefore, be it resolved by Commissioners Court of Nuasis County, the week of May 7th, 2023, through May 13th, 2023, as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. All citizens are encouraged to pay tribute to the many correctional employees working in Nuasis County for their vital public service they provide.
So moved.
I second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And the sheriff, would you like to say anything, or? We want to say thank you first, by all means.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you so much for this recognition. Uh, we would love to have the uh, hardworking men and women of the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office, Nuasis County Jail, to be here today to accept this recognition. However, they are doing their jobs right now, keeping um, the jail safe. So on behalf of the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office, we want to thank you for this recognition. You've had the opportunity to meet our jail command staff on many occasions. Um, you know our sheriff very well, but these are some of the um, the officers. We have our corporals, Corporal Anthony Pedales, Corporal Jared Betis, and Corporal Amanda Abrego. We also have our gang intelligence officer, who um, he is Deputy John Martinez. He is assigned to the uh, the jail as well. And we could not do the job that we have to do every single day if it wasn't for these hard men, uh, hardworking men and women of the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office. So again, thank you very much for this recognition.
Yes, no, thank you all very much for what you do every day.
And we would also like a picture of that one, of course.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Very much appreciate you guys, every day.
Thank you all.
Need um, I do the public comment. Moving on to item, what? Oh, I'm sorry, um, Ms. Henderson wants to speak?
I think you called public comment.
I, I am going to that right now. Yes, excuse me, did you need something?
No, I was just making sure you knew her hand was up.
Yes, okay. Uh, she's wanting to speak in public comment then?
I think so.
Okay. Ms., do you want to unmute her, let her?
She has to unmute herself.
Ms. Hernandez, did you want to speak?
Okay, uh, yes. Okay, yeah. Um, yeah, I would like to bring up item, let me make sure I get it right. 3A, number 13. Um, the splitting of, of Precinct 8. Oh, my name is Lisa Orsbrun Hernandez, 5826 Yano Drive. Um, so I don't live in Precinct 8. But in looking at the two maps that you have suggested for the split, one does not follow the mandatory uh, within 5% of each other for precincts. The second one, however, where it's more evenly split, does. So keep that in mind when you vote on that. And also, you know, if we do this one precinct every two years, or one change every two years, it's going to take forever to get the county in compliance. Now, I know statutorily, you do not have to do uh, Justice of the Peace, nor Constable areas, but as long as you're redistricting, let's do that too. I also then request that I be allowed to speak after executive session to item 5C. Thank you.
5C?
The District Attorney.
Oh, oh, that's an after executive, yes, okay. Um, the next first person on the list for public comment, we have Becky Moller.
My name is Becky Moller. I reside in Nuasis County at 7217 Sparkle C Drive, Unit EE. And I come before you today to talk about the issue with regard to choosing the legal counsel for our uh, District Attorney, Mark Gonzalez. One of the reasons I think that we're here today is that I, I thought it was on the agenda at one other time and got scrubbed for some reason, so it's gone on and on and on, and then he found it necessary to hire his own counsel before the uh, the visiting judge, Judge Peoples was here. If we had done this in a timely manner, we would have had this resolved long ago, uh, not had as much emotion involved in it, not had as much money probably spent as we're going to spend. And so I'm here today to ask you to please, he had to hire counsel to defend him in front of Judge Peoples. I hope that you'll vote to allow him, his own counsel, Chris Gale, to, to represent him and, and pay for that. That's, that's my request of you today. In my world, it appears, one of the things that we used when I was working is you can sleep on your rights. That's the old arbitration thing, many of y'all have probably heard over the years, you slept on your rights. I think you, Commissioners and Judge, have slept on your rights on this particular issue, and it should have been handled before the, the first court case. And I would ask that you grant him the counsel that, that he's requesting. Well, I think, of course, I know there's three, but I would ask that you grant him the counsel of Chris Gale, who uh, picked up the pieces and tried to represent him fairly at the uh, at the Judge Peoples thing. The last thing I want to say now on this topic is, on Corrections Officers Day, say a prayer for the Daniel Nagel family who lost his life at the Beeville Prison, probably in the 2000s. He was stabbed by an inmate, so thank you for doing the Corrections Officers piece today as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Correo?
Hi, my name is Joan Correo. I live at 4055 Klarmit Drive, and I'm here to speak today also regarding the petition against Mr. Gonzalez. Um, I just want to say, now that the court has announced that they will pay the attorney fees for Mr. Mark Gonzalez, I hope and pray that the people who have so earnestly petitioned for this will now support the court when, whatever you decide on how to judiciously spend this county's money for these proceedings. I also want to strongly state that after looking and reading over the lengthy petition, that Mark Gonzalez does not seem to be the victim in this case. The real victims are the families of this county, who have had their victims' rights violated, and who will never see justice. Also, I must say, our own county will be a victim as well, because now we must spend our valuable resources to defend his lack of actions. I urge the county to choose the attorney that will represent Mr. Gonzalez, whoever that is to be, and to limit the amount of money and time that will be spent on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Patricia Jones?
Hello, my name is Patricia Jones, and I live at 4334 St. Georgia Drive in Corpus Christi. Um, I'm here today to ask that the court vote in favor of confirming Chris Gale as uh, our DA, Mark Gonzalez's attorney. I feel like uh, Mr. Gonzalez should be able to choose his own, choose the attorney, and Chris Gale is already very familiar with the situation, so I think that would be, would make common sense to just keep it that way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Linda White?
My name is Linda White. I'm a resident of Nuasis County in Corpus Christi. I live at 825 Egyptian Drive. And I would like to speak in favor of appointing uh, Mark Gonzalez's current attorney, uh, because it makes physical sense. You shouldn't be paying again for services. This man has already done, he's already prepared cases, he's already worked with the defendant. And I'm, I'm glad you decided to pay for his attorney, because um, county employees should not, and, and elected officials, including yourselves, if you're sued in reference to your performance of your job, you should have the support of the county behind you. Thank you so much.
Carolyn Kio- Kiovula? Kiovula? Sorry.
Good morning, I'm Carolyn Koivola.
Koivola, sorry.
And no one knows how to pronounce it, so that's okay. I live at 930 Coral Place in Corpus Christi. I'm also the Precinct 5 Democratic Chairman. And I'm here this morning to urge you to confirm District Attorney Mark Gonzalez's choice of Mr. Gale as attorney in this baseless lawsuit. I'd like to thank you for making the decision to pay for his attorney, and also, I want to mention that, to me, it seems only logical to allow his current attorney to continue, rather than choosing someone else who will have to duplicate the work that's already been done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sean Flanagan?
My name is Sean Flanagan. I live at 4218 Herndon Street, and I want to congratulate and commend the court for the mature and professional and nonpartisan way y'all have been handling this very unpleasant issue of the recall petition and the issues to come out of it, reference our DA, Mark Gonzalez. I wish to make two points. First point, a false narrative has developed that this is a political issue. The folks that say so are deceiving the public. This is an issue of a public official who has been so derelict in his duty that he is in danger to all the people living in Corpus Christi. The record clearly shows that Mark Gonzalez has released thousands of people who have committed acts of felony-level criminality with no accountability for their actions. Each one of these acts of a felony criminality has a person behind it who's been victimized. Consider, a woman finally calls the police because her boyfriend's been physically abusing him, the police come and arrest him, and then the DA releases him without charge. What happens next? Does he say, well, I got away with it, and I shouldn't do it again? Or does he go after his girlfriend and report him to the police to make sure it never happened, that she never does that again? That girlfriend has had no justice. Who pays her legal bills as she can, as she cannot count on our DA? What recourse does she have for protection against the predator that the DA released without accountability? This woman's story is repeated a thousand times in our city. That's why Mr. Gonzalez has this petition, that's why he's going to trial, not because of his political affiliation, but because of his dereliction of duty endangers everyone, but especially the most helpless in our city. The record shows that people that Mr. Gonzalez has released with no accountability have gone on to commit further physical abuse, further sexual abuse, and have even escalated to committing murder. That's the truth of this recall petition. Shame on anyone else who says differently. Point two, like everyone, Mr. Gonzalez is entitled to legal counsel, and he can pick anybody he wants if he pays for it himself. But if he wants we, the people, to pay for it, then he needs to happily accept whoever this court decides to appoint for him, with whatever limit this court chooses to do. If Mr. Gonzalez does not want to have any legal bills, that's real simple. He resigns. That's what he should do if he's worried about how much his law, lawyer's going to cost him. And looking at the evidence in that petition, that'd be a smart move. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joe Carter?
Hello, my name is, pardon me, my name is Joe Carter. I'm from B County, Texas. I knew Dean Ashley when he was a kid. Uh, I have a letter I want to read into, uh, to the record here, to each of you, thank you for your dedication to public service. I wish to encourage and support you in your functions as both trustees and fiduciaries. As you care for the public trust, you set policies and you manage public resources. My experience as a trustee and a fiduciary has spanned nearly six decades, all of which required me to give prudence and care to the management of assets belonging to someone else. The level of a fiduciary's prudence and care for the assets of others is to be before, above, and beyond the care of their own assets. I've found that being vested with such responsibility is both a high honor and often a thankless task. While residing in B County for about 30 years, I've rendered service and supported county governments and law enforcement agencies, and recognize that good government in Nuasis County can and does affect governments in the surrounding counties for good. To that end, it's always hoped that the next infrastructure project or contract for service is delivered as designed and contracted for, and also on a timely basis. However, subsequent uh, reviews of many private and public projects and contracts for service that ended in less than satisfactory found the commonality that, in retrospect, the contractor or provider, in this case, the public vendor, might, uh, might, who you have in question, should be examined to make sure that they have ever finished three projects, whether large or small, with the quality of being both finished ahead of schedule and back of budget. Most fiduciary decision makers who award contracts and engage professionals depend on three key points. These are the deliverables, or the specifications, the dollars and terms of payments, and the deadlines. The common failure here in unsatisfactory outcomes is that they do not consider perhaps the most important intangible quality of a service provider, which is whether or not that person or company has a record of delivering a quality product or service, both ahead of time and back of budget. There are many contractors and service providers that seek to get into a contract with no conscience, or perhaps even a premeditated plan to incur excess costs and not finish on time. It's not prudent to anticipate that a provider who has proven untimely in the past will be on time and within budget for the project then at hand. I urge you to always determine whether contractors and service providers have a record of returning projects finished on time and within budget. This afternoon, you'll be convening on item 5C on the agenda, the importance of your prudence and care in making this decision is much greater than it may appear from the dollar amount involved. In this decision, and others, I urge you to know the record of the intang- and the intangible character and quality of those who you're dealing with. Again, I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Samuel Foyer?
Friar.
Friar, sorry.
Judge Scott, Commissioners, I'm Samuel Andre Friar. I live in zip code 78414. As a retired Colonel in the Army, there are two things I hold dearly. One is scripture, the other is the Constitution of the United States. As far as scripture is concerned, it says that he has shown you, O man, what is required, what is good, and what is the Lord require of you, but to do justly, to love mercifully, and walk humbly before your God. During, during public comments, several- During, during public comments, several citizens attempted to make the request to remove Mr. Mark Gonzalez from a political, from his office as political and an ethnic issue, and label it a threat to democracy. It is neither political, nor was it ethnic, and it is within the law. In this constitutional republic, we, the people, are the government, and we cannot ensure a more perfect union without upholding the constitutional laws of the land. This is what a district attorney is elected to do for the people. The Bill of Rights also grants the accused of crimes the right to a speedy trial, a public trial, and an impartial jury, to be informed of the nature of the cause of accusations, to be confronted with the witnesses against him, and to have compulsory process of obtaining witnesses in his favor, and to have the assistance of counsel for their defense. Now, the right of trial by jury is also extended to suits of common law. Now, our district attorney has been informed of the nature and causes, and a cause of accusations against him. His request to have the charges dismissed have been denied, so he will have and be afforded the right to a trial by jury where he may not only confront his witnesses against them, but provide witnesses on his behalf, as being represented by a counsel elected, selected by the county. This is one, there is one other right that must be granted him, and that is the right to a speedy and public trial. As a taxpayer citizen, I implore you to, to do whatever within your authority to prevent this trial from delay and lingering. Another related right within the Fifth Amendment prohibits depriving a person of life, property, and liberty without due process of the law. Now, understanding this, if an impartial jury finds the accused guilty of dereliction of the duty of District of Attorney, would it not be just to have him repay the attorney fees to the Nuasis County citizens whom he will have been found negligent in serving? So what does the Lord require of you? To do justly, to love mercifully, and walk humbly before your God. The victims of crimes that have not been prosecuted need their rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Holland?
Thank you, County Judge, Commissioners. My name is Victoria Holland. I live at 235 Ohio Avenue here in Corpus Christi. I'm here to speak to item, there seems to be some confusion over whether it's item 4C or 5C, but it is concerning the appointment of a lawyer paid to Mr. Mark Gonzalez and the fees were in. I want to mention briefly that Mr. Gonzalez has, as of yet, not had to defend himself. Mr. Gonzalez, as of yet, no trial has started. Mr. Gonzalez, as of yet, has been able to sit back, watch the proceedings, and see if a judge decided that this case has merit or not. Now, this was a neutral judge chosen by the Supreme Court of Texas. I think it's key to note that this judge in the past has always dismissed cases like this. The fact that he chose to move forward indicates this is not a baseless case, nor is this a case where it was frivolous or particularly viciously politically motivated. Now, I will be honest with the public and say that my name is, again, Victoria Holland, and I'm the Executive Director of Citizens Defending Freedom here in Nuasis County. Our organization has supported this petition from the beginning, and we have supported it because we believe in the citizens of this county, and we believe in rule of law and in victims' rights. And at the end of the day, we believe that the women, children, and families of this county deserve better than to see their abusers back out on the streets with their charges completely dropped. Now, I am going to say that Mr. Gonzalez deserves a fair trial, and a speedy one at that. My quest, my plea to you here today is to act as fiduciaries of the people, and not only decide on a reasonable expenditure of funds for the defense of Mr. Gonzalez, but also a time limit in which to use these funds, to avoid any sort of delay tactics from, from either side. We want to see justice done, and we want to see justice done swiftly. To avoid even the appearance of conflict of interest, we would prefer that you appoint a lawyer who does not have a history of suing the county, and we would appreciate it if, despite the fact that Mr. Gonzalez, I'm sure, would like to hire the most expensive trial attorney he can find. Let's be honest, when you use public funds for your defense, you typically get a publicly-appointed lawyer. That's just, that is what it is. And at the end of the day, this is my, my personal feelings on the matter, and I believe that there is some precedence that this would be allowable. If he is indeed found guilty, we would like to see him repay those monies to the people. Ultimately, it's the people of this county that matter. It's their stories, it's their safety, it's their livelihoods. And Mr. Gonzalez will be successful with or without this position. I fully believe that he is an individual of immense intellect, and he will use that to rise regardless of the outcome of this. However, right now, we have to be concerned about the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Vaughn?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I had a hard time back there not saying aye, but I didn't.
You could have.
You wouldn't have taken it. Every day, you sit up there and you make decisions that some the public likes, some the public doesn't, and it's very difficult. I'm here today to comment on the decision you made representing DA Mark Gonzalez. I think that public officials, especially DAs and judges, should be held to a higher standard because they are entrusted to uphold the law. The public voted for him when he took office to do just that. I'm not a fan of the DA, but I recognize and respect that he was elected by the citizens. And in America, and in this country, you are innocent until proven guilty. So whether you like, dislike him, whether you're Republican, Democrat, Independent, Libertarian, whatever, you should always have representation if you're accused of something. And I think the county should pay for it. But, that being said, I trust that you will make certain conditions in his representation. I hope that you choose the lawyer, because the citizens are paying for it. You know how lawyers are. They can charge a bunch of money, a bunch of hours, and the price will go up. So I think you should, should get to choose that. I think a limit should be set, and I think that a stipulation should be made. The county pays for, the citizens paying for it, that he cannot come back and sue the county for anything after that. And most importantly, if he is found guilty of the charges, he needs to reimburse the county for all expenses and all the fees. And if he is innocent, he shouldn't have a problem agreeing to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Madrigal?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to address the issue concerning Mark Gonzalez. You know, we've heard a lot of people come up here and say how we should limit Mark Gonzalez's expenditures regarding lawyers, and how he should be forced to reimburse the county whether he loses this case. Now, what hasn't been addressed is that a portion of these taxpayers are forced to spend money prosecuting this frivolous lawsuit because the county attorney's not doing this for free, it's costing taxpayers money. Now, if it's going to cost Mark Gonzalez money if he loses, then it should also cost the plaintiff money that he should reimburse the county if he loses. Now, the fact that, you know, it's coming to question about Mr. Chris Gale. Mr. Chris Gale is an experienced attorney who's been on this case since day one. The Commissioners' Court, I believe, failed Mark Gonzalez in responding in a timely manner to give him the representation that he needed, in a timely manner. I've been through the initial hearing before Judge Peoples. I came in a couple of weeks ago to address this court regarding this matter, and here we are again, all over again. I would like to thank the three Commissioners, Gonzalez, Marius, and Hernandez, for sticking up and attempting to do the right thing. I will say this, that, you know, it's, it's getting tiresome, you know, to come back here and have to fight for democracy, have to fight for, you know, against people trying to disenfranchise the voters of Nuasis County. Mark Gonzalez wasn't elected once. Mark Gonzalez was elected twice by us. And for the county attorney to take it upon herself to disenfranchise voters, that's, that's a big no-no, and it should be considered, and I would request that Chris Gale be allowed to represent him. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Sines?
Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. Well, I am a supporter of Mark Gonzalez. I'm really more a supporter of something bigger. The attempt to circumvent democratic elections is becoming more and more real. We saw it on January 6, 2021, when a constitutional process was taking place, because it was, and they did temporarily stop it. And, of course, it proceeded, and a new president was elected. Today, they're trying to do the same thing. You see, they're going to talk about the Constitution like they really believe in it. Well, we know that democracy exists in this country. It's real simple. It's fifty percent plus one, and you win. If you lose, you get a shot to run again. That's the system. Every one of you all got elected that way, by a majority rule. This is so important. They tried to get Mark Gonzalez out not only once, but twice, and they lost. And now they're trying to find a different way. What they're not telling you is if Mark Gonzalez is removed, the governor will then appoint a new district attorney, who will very likely be a Republican. That's what they want. They want a Republican in there, and that's fine. But you got to win the election. That's democracy. That's our system of government. We use it a long, long time. I'm asking you to stand up for democracy. I'm asking you to stand up for Chris Gale, because as Mr. Chesney has stated, he's a really, really good attorney. He sues y'all a lot, and he's very successful. But he did brag about how good he was. And man, when I heard him take on Jenny Dorsey the first time, he ripped her to pieces real bad. So what I would say to you is stand up for democracy. Thank you.
Before you leave, would you state your address? I'm sorry, I forgot to get that.
6022 Sweetcomb Street.
Thank you. Did I say that wrong? Is there's anybody else that didn't get the chance to sign up? Yes. If you'll come up and state your name, and then you can sign this afterwards, your name and address.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is 6794 Paloma Avenue in Bishop, Texas, which is Nuasis County, rural Nuasis County. I am the Community Relations Manager for MHID, and I am here to talk to you guys about an agenda item on, on deck today. It is an MOU between the Nuasis County Keach Library and Bishop Library and MHID. As you know, MHID is the designated no-cost provider of services, mental health services in Nuasis County, and intellectual developmental disability services. But apart from that, one really important thing we do is bring the community resources and education. And I think it was said earlier from the Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month groups, they were saying it takes many agencies to make a difference in the community. We are just one of the agencies that are going to be partnering with the library. But on top of that, we are active in the community right now with programs and resources. We do kite fest, we do mental health teen fest, we do suicide prevention training, we do mental health first aid. So please allow us to continue our work on the ground here in Nuasis County, serving this rural community. And honestly, there are no, there are not, there can never be enough organizations to serve rural South Texas, rural Nuasis County. So please continue to let us do our work with Keach Family Library. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll sign in the back, she has that. That concludes, oh, we have one more that wants to?
Yes.
Yes. If you'll just state your name and address.
All right, where's the microphone?
Right there.
Here. Okay, thanks. Yes, I'm Ron Stringer. I live at 3410 Lagoon Shores Road in Flower Bluff. And is that good enough?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, this, we are not trying to get a Republican into office. We're trying to get a man into office that will defend the people of this city. Look at Chicago, look at all these other cities where, where people are, are taking revenge into their own hands. When you have a loved one killed, there are people out there that will grab a gun and go after the perpetrator because there is no law. When you have a man that lets people go, that runs the time out, so they say, "Well, we can't prosecute him now because their time is run out," you can say he's incompetent, but that's not the case. He came up to the office saying, "I will not prosecute certain kinds of drug deals," and there was, there were several things that he said he wouldn't prosecute. He made himself his own legislator. We need to defend the people of this county. We don't want to turn into another murder fest like other cities. We do not need to be our own law. We need to have a law here. And if, if your directive is to put a cap on the lawyer's fees, then we, we expect that, we really do. And I respect y'all, but we do need all of us to, to follow our directives. And if we're to, if you're to choose the lawyer, we really expect you to do that. And we don't want, and, and I've heard that one of the things, you don't want a lawyer that's accustomed to suing the county. So this man should not be the lawyer. And that's all I've got to say, and I'll be praying for y'all's and your decision.
That concludes our public comments section. Moving on to item H, board appointments. Commissioner Chesney, did you want me to hold off and come back later? It's okay. H1, Nuasis County Emergency Service District 2. We have three positions, their term expired, the court opened for applications. We did appoint one, but we still have two that are out. The appointment would be for two-year terms that will expire December 2024. We did get a letter of intent from Gary Graham and David Jackson. This is yours, Commissioner Chesney, did you want to?
Judge, I'd like to, a motion to reappoint Gary Graham.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Gary Graham. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint David Jackson.
We, we have a motion and a second to reappoint David Jackson. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here as well. Moving on to item 2, Nuasis County Emergents, Emergency Service District 3. Moving on to Item 2, Noises County Emergency Service District 3. There's one vacancy, and we opened, we had two applicants that were received. Do I have a motion for either one? The applicant was received from Calvin Kanamori and Kevin Kuiper. We have a motion to appoint Kevin Kuiper. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Kevin Kuiper to that position. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to Item Number 3, Noises County Library Advisory Board. They have two terms that expire on that as well. One letter of intent was received from Tabitha Greenwood for the Noises County Library Advisory Board. Do I have a motion to?
Motion to reappoint.
We have a motion to, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Tabitha Greenwood. All those, any other discussion, sorry?
That, uh, applicant or reappointment?
Reappointment. She's an incumbent. She reapplied.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. On Item Number 4, the Noises County Mental Health and Intellectual Disability Board of Directors. The court opened for applications and letters of intent. Only one letter of intent was received from the incumbent Bruce Willis, Wilson, sorry. Four new applications, letters of intent were received.
Motion to reappoint Mr. Wilson.
Second.
Second. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Or is there just one position? That's what I'm trying to read on here. Iday, that's not on here. Did y'all? Four turn, there are four positions, so we need to appoint four people. Yes. Okay, so we have the one motion for Bruce Willis, and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bruce Wilson, not Willis. I keep saying Willis. I went to school with Bruce Willis. The motion passes. Thank you. And then we have three other appointments. We have a letter of intent from Sandra Gomez, an application from Jackie Caldwell, an application from Carol Houston.
And Jimmy Rodriguez.
And are these replacements? I'm sorry, are these?
Demi Rodriguez, a resume.
So are some of these going, some of them did not reapply?
The one was Bruce Wilson, Wilson was the incumbent. Four new applications and letters of intent were received. The others are not incumbents.
Right, so these other ones did not reapply?
No. The ones that expired, yes. So we have Sandra Gomez, Jimmy Rodriguez, Jackie Caldwell, and Carol Houston. But we only have three positions available, so does someone want to make?
Judge, I'd like to make a motion for Jimmy Rodriguez.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Jimmy Rodriguez. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion for Carol Houston.
The motion passes. We have a motion for Carol Houston. Do we have a second? We have a second for Carol Houston. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And we have one more, right?
A motion for Jackie Caldwell.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Jackie Caldwell. Is there any other discussion?
A question on this, not just on this appointment, but Iday, maybe you can help us, or if we need to get Tara in here. So to me, when it's described as letter, well, letter of intent usually is the incumbent, right? My experience. So I see that there's a letter of intent from Ms. Gomez, but no application. And when I look at the list, she's not on the list. So I don't know if we can get Tara to screen that, or how we do it internally to ensure that there's a distinction, and maybe that name doesn't even get included, maybe, just to help us with confusion, because to me, it's a two-part thing. Like, if you want to set in a letter or resume, that's great. But if you're new, you've got to put in an application.
Application like everyone else.
So that's my only concern on this one. I mean, I would consider her, but because I don't see an application, then I would have to go with Ms. Caldwell then.
Okay. That's a good point.
So if you could just work on her and tweaking that, just for.
In the future, if she wants, yeah.
It's confusing when we get up here, so.
And we have Tara. She can speak.
So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, I think in the past, it's, or the way I at least understood it, it was you can do a, people could submit a letter of intent. Ideally, they would do an application. But going forward, if they do submit a letter of intent, follow up with them and make sure they do an application as well.
Yeah.
If it's a new person, that's how we've always done it. That's how we've always done it. If it's a new person, there has to be an application.
Right.
Reappointing just a letter.
Yeah, reappointing just a letter.
Just a letter. So we have a motion and a second for Jackie Caldwell. Is there any other discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And I think that takes care of everyone on that board, yes. Moving on to Number 2, the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that a member wishes to pull? I need to pull Item T for, we'll table to the next meeting.
Is that a motion, Judge?
A motion to table Item T on behalf of Dr. Fagan. He's not ready to move forward with that.
Second.
We'll move it to the next meeting. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. And do y'all have any?
Yeah, I want to pull D.
D.
Special motion.
D as in dog?
D as in dog, special motion.
We have a motion. I'll second that.
Judge, you want to pull?
I thought you wanted to pull it.
Oh, you just want to pull it for discussion, so yes. Any other, you're not tabling, okay?
Want to pull O?
Yes. D, O.
No. D, O, and, and M.
D, O, and M.
Judge, I'd like to pull N as in Nancy.
N. Any others?
Judge, I'm going to want to speak on, I'm going to want to speak on O as well.
O, okay. We've already got it pulled, so we'll have discussion on that. Commissioner Hernandez, do you have any that you wish to pull for discussion?
No, just, I think they've been pulled already.
Okay, so, or is that all for everyone? Then I will accept a motion to pass the Consent Agenda excluding Item D, M, N, and O, and T. Well, T's been tabled, so we don't have to do it. So a motion to.
Wait, you pulled P, or no?
T, we tabled T, sorry. Yeah, so I don't need to include that in our list. A motion to pass the Consent Agenda excluding Items D, M, N, and O.
So move, or second, if that's a motion. Second.
A second to the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes, so we will move on to Item D.
Yeah, on Item D, I think the last meeting, we had kind of told Mr. Pimentel, I guess, to get with Dale, and I don't know if y'all got together, Dale, or not, to go back and review whatever the amount we owe to the land. And again, and I think this is the same ones that were submitted last time. But I talked to Mr. Pimentel this morning, and the information they were requesting has not come in yet. So I'm going to go ahead and again, table this until we get the information that we need. I think it was approved to pay pending the, the backup being submitted by them, which was discrepancies as far as the hours and the days and everything else. And I know that we contacted him. I know one talked to him, but one's sick. And I talked to him this morning, and he said, what he recommended, we tabled it.
So.
That's what I recommend, we table it too, because we haven't cleared it yet.
Okay, so we have a motion to table 2, the May 10th?
Well, hold on, but which one? Not all of them?
No, that's going to be a table number, everything to do with land, right?
Thirty-five, thirty-fourty, I remember that as Commissioner. Thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty?
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thirty-five, thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
But it's thirty-five.
Thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty.
All of the L A N invoices?
Right. Because those are still in question.
That's twenty-five, you're right. Twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty-four.
And I still need for him to go ahead and get together with Audit Department and find out what do we actually owe them, and how much, and get it paid.
Well, Commissioner, we did, we get with one and his staff on these items, and they did provide us the revised bills that they have, and they did authorize them. That's why they're included, or we wouldn't have included them.
I talked to one this morning.
They provided the information to us.
Yeah.
And I talked about Public Works.
Yeah. But I think we went, I think I want to go back and share with one again, because I talked to him on the phone, and he said, go ahead, I want to table it, you know.
Okay. So Judge, I would like to make a motion to pass all of the other ones on here other than the ones that Commissioner Gonzalez just recited, which were twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty. Those would be excluded for the moment.
I'll second, oh, go ahead. Commissioner Marius, second. Any other discussion? All those in, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me just go back, Adele, to the one we had before. And maybe we just, my intention were, again, let's do everything we owe for lump sum, right? From this month, because November, December, everything should already been, should have been in, right?
We, they should have been, but again, we only put this on when we receive them for our office, and we have to rely on the department to provide it.
Okay. All right, so that's another day. I think we need to, when Mr. Pimentel gets back, we need to sit down with him and find out where we at with that.
So do you make a motion? Was there a motion?
There was, we already, now you want, we need a motion to push those to the May 10th meeting.
Yeah, May 10th.
You have the motion.
Well, the motion will include the 10th, May.
Okay, so you're going to, you're going to read them again, because I kind of did those other ones, so.
Twenty-five.
And clarification, Judge. So Ginny, I know we've had this overall philosophical debate on many issues.
Yes.
And one is the date, but also the payment, right? The timing, that just worries me. So I support needing to exclude certain items and review them more. But can, can we ask, I know we can't direct you, but can we ask that someone from your staff be a part of that discussion? Because we need someone to, I mean, unless you feel that we're okay, but do, don't we need somebody kind of pushing the narrative of getting?
He may be able to fill in some facts that I don't have, so.
So before we make your next motion, why don't we ask about those invoices? Yes.
You're in the hot seat. Thank you for showing up, Juan.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Yes.
So Juan, my question on the items that Commissioner Gonzalez wanted to pull. My concern is just the timing. I know we've always talked about the invoices, when they're coming in.
Yes, sir.
As opposed to when do we need to pay them? That's my only question, right? So if we could just get that addressed, right? I don't have a problem tabling if we need to, but I want to make sure that that's addressed, because I don't want to get us in trouble by taking this action. I support the Commissioner wanting to review it more, but I also don't want to get us in any kind of bind to where we're holding back invoices based on like what Dale said for several months already.
And I believe Dale stated that he already received the backup, so they, are you saying that they're ready to be paid?
Yes, if we have, do you have the backup, Dale?
Yeah, you're always sending us the backup, that's why we, but if they're still, it has to be resolved.
I would, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dale.
If they're still having to be resolved, we can, we can, we'll pull them for discussion in May.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, I know that we talked to, my staff talked to Ellen yesterday, and we're still waiting on some minor backup information for these invoices, so if we can.
But on all of them, or just like, is there any of them that are okay to pay? I'm just asking, because John makes a good point. I'm just, I mean, if there's.
We already approved to pay them pending on the backup.
No, no, I'm saying, but have, have we gotten the backup on any of them? Or are we needing to do all of them and hold all of them? Because there's a bunch of them on here, and maybe we got backup on some that we could.
Go ahead and get.
Approve, but if there's, if they're not, that's okay. I'm just asking you.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, what happens is there's several invoices that are out, right? And you have, I think it's, I'm just going to throw a number. You have thirty, and you have all the way up to fifty, right? So if you do something on thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, and you have to modify those numbers, then it's a domino effect for the remaining invoices. So that's the reason why we can't recommend, or I wouldn't recommend approving these invoices until we actually get the backup information. So it's a domino effect if they have to modify some numbers.
Can we strongly urge you to get this item taken care of before our next meeting? This needs to be a priority. We've postponed it twice, and if we owe these people money, we need to pay them for services.
I totally agree, Judge.
You know, I feel the same way, Judge. We all, that's why we approved to pay them pending the backup corrections. But if they owe us money, then they should pay us the money. I mean, why are we paying something that we, it wasn't done? That's my question. I mean, I don't mind, I don't care paying them. You know, we pay them what we owe them, but if they give us invoices that are not documented, that you can't, you can't track them, how are we going to pay them? You know, that's the problem I have with a lot of these people we're dealing with right now, because maybe that's the way they were, they were trained to do by the previous judge. You know, they just approve, 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 you know? But I think it's time to us to go look at this, all this invoice that we're getting, you know, and scrutinize what's going on. I mean, you know, why, why is the information's not there? You know, I mean, we asked them for dates, we asked them for times, we asked them, very simple, very simple. If they did the work, it should be there. And that's the only I'm asking, not just.
No, no, I agree with your concept. All I was asking was, do we have to table all of these, or any of them ready to go?
I mean, you want to pay them, pay them, I mean.
No, 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 I'm saying, if, because we're waiting the backup, if we're still waiting for backup on every single item, but there's, we're talking about tabling ten different, you know, items. And that's all I'm asking, is has any of the back, are you satisfied that any of these, and I don't know if you even know which ones we're talking about, but it's twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, I mean, there's a bunch of them. We don't have the backup on any of those?
Well.
Or the needed backup?
Yes, sir, we need backup.
On all of them?
On several of them. And the thing about it, Commissioner, is like I said, it's going to be a domino effect, too. If they do have to modify a dollar amount or dollar amounts, then it'll be a domino effect to all of them. So we've been in contact yesterday with L A N, and we should have all the documentation ready for next Commissioner's Court.
But you submitted this to Dale for payment, because you thought they were ready, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So that's what I'm trying to figure out is, if they're not, why would?
They're not, why'd you submit them then?
Why would you submit?
I recommended them, Judge and Commissioners, for them to get paid. I know Commissioner had some questions regarding them, so those are the questions we're just.
Okay, so, so, and that's fair. I mean, if he's got, so these aren't really your questions, they're Commissioner Gonzalez's questions?
Yes, sir.
Fair, that's okay. That's clarification that I wasn't aware of. Thank you.
So Commissioner Gonzalez has made a motion to table Items 25, 26, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40 payments to our next meeting, May 10th. Is that the date, May 10th? Yes.
Is that, did you need a second, or you have a second?
No, I need a second.
I'm happy to second, sure.
Okay. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners.
Thank you for being here. I hope you're feeling better.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And moving on to Item M, Approved Supplemental Agreement Number 7 for No-Cost Time Extension to the Engineering Service Contract for the I.B. McGee Multipurpose. Scott, you're up. Thank you.
What questions can I answer, and who's asking? I don't know.
Oh, I have a question, it was me, on M. It's an Approval Supplemental Agreement Number 7. I mean, is it for time, extended time?
It's just extending time for the engineer.
About seven of them?
Well, Commissioner, it's been a, it's been a snakebit project, you know? There've been all kinds of unknown conditions, and really, it's the contractor that's, you know, struggling in some cases to get some of the work done. He has R F I's, Request for Information. So we've got to keep our engineer on, where he's not asking for any more money to be able to answer those questions. And many of the questions come up with unknown conditions because of where we started with the building, you know, after it sat so long after Hurricane Harvey, waiting on this insurance settlement. So, I mean, we're getting there. Now they're talking about the end of June, you know?
It's ridiculous, but this is a no-cost extension, and like you said, we don't really have a choice. But it's, the whole project's ridiculous.
Well, I know it's a no cost, I just, that was my question, because.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I see eight, ten, nine, ten, I said, what's going on?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, I'm gonna be coming back in here with a couple more change orders, they're gonna cost us something, we're still in budget, but I just put you, put you on notice, I can't get around it.
Do we have a motion for this item then today to pass?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, approve the supplemental agreement number seven. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes, thank you very much.
I got the next one, too.
Okay, um, item N, authorized execution of an agreement with Mott McDonald LLC for engineering services for Pakri Channel Living Shoreline Project.
Judge, I just pulled it so Scott could introduce the engineer real quick and then move on.
Yes, sir. So, Aaron, you wanna come up? Uh, this is Aaron Horan, Mott McDonald. Um, uh, we selected Mott through a very extensive RFQ process. We had about seven respondents, and Michael and the rest of the scoring team, I think Iday was on that team. Uh, we, we worked really hard to, to select the best engineer we could for this kind of project, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Uh, thank, thank you, everybody, for, uh, selecting us. So, yes, my name is Aaron Horan, I'm a resident here in Nuasis County, and I'm a principal coastal engineer and office manager for our, uh, office here, so we're really excited about, uh, finally being able to do some work for the county, um, and to serve you guys well.
Thank you, excited to meet you.
Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you, we like that resident of Nuasis County, stay here, thank you, good job.
Yes, yes. Do we have a motion to pass?
So moved, Judge.
Second.
We have a motion and second to pass. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, the motion passes, thank you very much. Moving on to item O, except for record purposes, the following executed lease agreements at the Nuasis County Airport. That was yours, I think you pulled, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Again, I think we talked about this the last meeting also, again, I know it's in the backup, but it's what we said, we were gonna try and, um, document the amounts, and, on, on, when something come up like this, what were the amounts we paying for?
I don't remember what you said.
Like, it's two hundred and fifty dollars each, according to the backup, but it's two hundred and fifty dollars each hanger, we should put two hundred and fifty dollars by each one of them, so people in the audience know, and people, you know, they know what we, how much we doing, how much we paying, and, uh. They're gonna take any questions down the road, say, how much, how much was that hanger for, you know, but, you know, and I think we talked, we just talked about this last, the last meeting, so. So, anywhere we're gonna have money, I think it should be indicated.
It should be indicated, you're wanting it on the front page when we list it, because it is listed in the back in the consideration, but yes.
But people don't get the back.
Exactly, yes, I agree. So is that a motion to pass then, moving?
I just wanna bring it up, so I move.
A motion to pass that.
Your motion, put the amount in the motion, and I can add in the minutes.
Well, I, my motion included that this amount be stated.
Just, you can state, if you state it now, just for two fifty.
The two hundred and fifty dollars for?
Yeah, well, I proved my motion is that we approved the hanger for two fifty each.
Yeah.
Yes.
A second and, and discussion, Judge.
We have a second, and is there any other discussion?
Yes, Judge.
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Just on this item in general, um, I day, I, you know, we always have questions, right? We always look at how we, the, the hangars are, I, I think we've gotten a better process down, this pricing seemed scattered a few years ago, and I think we've gotten it, uh, better managed now. Uh, but is there a chance that we can get the airport director to come in? I, we haven't, I don't know if we've had, we haven't had him in a while, I'm saying like in person.
Oh, you should be in person, okay.
Like a presentation, I, I know we've gotten presentations in the past, and probably just with COVID and everything else, I don't recall that we've had one done. It may have been done by you or someone else on staff, or just something we've adopted, but maybe just something overall that helps us maybe with, um, visioning. I, I don't think that they have met quite in a while with their board, and that's a board that we appoint, and they were always a very active board, and, um, and according to, to appointees that we have on there, they haven't had a meeting in a while, so I don't know how accurate that is. But it may be if we can get Mr. Cox to start working on that again, and then come back and give us a report sometime in the summer, right? It doesn't have to be right now, but also maybe his chances during budget time, that he schedules some time then, maybe we can do it during the budget workshop, and he can give us just a brief overview. But I think that's real important, because, I mean, we're doing good work there, we're, we're trying, you know, he's, he's done a great job in turning this around there, but the board is not connected with him at this moment, at least, like I said, the last I heard, which was probably about three or four weeks ago, so that's concerning to me.
Okay.
So if he can just work on that with him, I'd appreciate it.
I want with, with that direction.
Thank you.
Now, Commissioner, that'd be a good idea, because, uh, uh, this, this last fiscal year, we had to implement GASB eighty-seven, which is our lease agreement requirements, and, and we need to make sure we work with the airport director to make sure what our, our hangars are ringing for, and to make sure they're paid in full, so, uh, we don't have any requirements on our, our reports.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great idea. He is online, but I don't see that he is, um, asking to speak or anything, so he might be busy, so, but we will get him in here and try to take care of that, yes.
Not a rush.
Um, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to our regular agenda then.
I'm gonna move motion to, uh, table number one indefinitely.
Table indefinitely. We have a motion to table number one indefinitely.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. I'm sorry, Ida, we can't talk about it if he has to table it. You may get with Commissioner Gonzalez afterwards to, um, discuss why. Um, item number two, discussing consider approval of dune protection permit for mitigation and compensation.
Judge, could I, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I meant to ask if I could, I have a, uh, one that I wanted to table, or, so, if people are waiting for it, just to be sure, and it's, it's regular agenda, item number five.
You want to table that one?
Yes, indefinitely.
Okay.
I'll put it back on when it's, when Scott tells us it's ready, that one's not ready.
It is moving.
Yeah, no, it's, right, so the motion to table.
But it's not ready. We have a motion to table item number five, uh, until they ask to bring it back. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes to table. Um, now going back to item number two, are there any other ones that people wish, do you want to go ahead and see if there's anything else anybody wants to table?
Ten, or forty-one, no? No, go ahead.
Okay, item number two, discuss and consider approval of dune protection permit for mitigation and compensation of previous impacts to dunes and dune vegetation.
Yeah, this one is administrat, administratively correct and ready to go, and this is going to fix some, uh, unauthorized construction activities that took place prior to getting a permit in place, and I recommend approval.
Move, passage, Judge.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you, and you're still up. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of a dune protection permit for large-scale construction of a single-family residence.
This is pretty much a standard, uh, large-scale permit. Um, everything's in place, administratively correct, uh, GLO's looked at it, we're ready to go, recommend approval.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Oh, any opposed, same sign, but the motion passes, we're all here, sorry. Um, item number four, discuss and consider approval of a dune protection permit for the repair, replacement of a dune walkover ramp terminating on the beach, and additional compensation of dunes and dune vegetation. That will be relocated from the adjacent to the walkover to the fore-dune area behind the proposed ramp.
Yes, ma'am, this is, uh, Mustang Towers, for the, you who are familiar with the island, probably know that. Anyhow, they had a dune walkover out there that, um, I actually helped them fix the end of it after Hurricane Harvey, within the boundaries that we could just do that, but, uh, they've decided, the HOA over there has decided that they would rather have that be an accessible walkway, giving people more accessibility down to the beach, and so, uh, this is a full-blown permit to do that, just that, and it's ready to go, recommend approval.
Judge, uh, motion to pass, and I have a quick discussion, and, uh, once there's a second, thank you.
We have a motion and a second, go ahead.
The only thing really, because I, I'm, we're gonna blow through these, and I think we need to, and that's great, but I do want to thank, uh, Scott for all the work that he's put into these, uh, I want to thank the BMAC for, for the work they put into these. These are moving better now, we've got a better system in place. Much appreciated to the BMAC, much appreciated to Scott.
And I'd like to thank Christine Majors, who we hired as a third-party consultant, helped me do all this.
Much appreciated, Christine, we appreciate your moving these things, because these are really, um, crucial, and they're, we've had a lot of clog up out there, and not pointing fingers, just saying we have, and we're trying to get that clog up.
I'll point them.
So, thank you, it's fine. It is what it is, so we're moving on, moving forward.
But thank y'all, I mean, it's not real fun, but we're glad to keep it going.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you. Um, item number six, discuss and consider approving and executing amendment number one to extend the office lease agreement between Nuasis County and the Corpus Christi RTA for housing of the Nuasis County Social Services Office and the Veteran Service Office, and I have been over there and looked at these, and the space is perfect for what they're doing, and I would make the motion myself to pass this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I, I.
Do y'all want to talk about it? It was like.
Judge, I, I'm just, I, I'm, I've been on record, and I'm gonna stay on record, I know it's, I'm the only one, and I'm okay with that, I, I still think, we don't, I, I think the more we move out of the courthouse, uh, we're just costing money where we have, we could have put stuff in the courthouse, so. I don't support this, but it's not, because I know it's not a great space, I just, I've never voted for this, and I'm just gonna stay on record as continuing to believe we should.
Well, I will let you know that at the moment, we do not have a location here for them.
Kinda gave some of that away, but we do, because we've still got third floor, and we've got other spaces, and anyway, so, we, we do have space here, it, we could, that we could retrofit, and we could probably use ARPA money for, like we just did for the public defender, and not be paying lease space, because we could retrofit the space over here in the third floor, we could do some other, you know, we could do some retrofitting here if we wanted to, but again, I've, I've sang this song for about, how long have I been over there now? Six, seven years? So I've sang this song for six, seven years, and I don't get anywhere on it, but I'm gonna keep singing it, because I think we could put them in the courthouse, retrofit it. We have ARPA money that we use for the public defender, we could use ARPA money for this, and, and be fine, and not have to pay lease money that comes out of the general fund, so.
Well, you know, I, I supported it from the beginning, and I think, I thought it was a good, it is a good location, and it's great, and it's accessible.
It's great looking.
But I want to join the choir, right? I'm, I, I think it's time to move on back to, to the courthouse, I think the third floor, it's space there, the third floor, that we need to utilize, one is the IT should be out of there completely, the public defenders should be out, out of there, so I think when you start looking at how can we utilize that office space there for the veterans and maybe social work. So, I know that we getting ready to probably open up the clinic also in Calderon, you know, so maybe we need to look at something else over there, social work, and maybe the veterans, too, right, we have an extension, so we're gonna be working on a lot of things coming up, so I, I myself think that it's time to, you know, we're talking about sixty, seventy thousand dollars here, so, uh, I think we can utilize that more into the county, county, uh, facility.
And Judge and Commissioners, I do invite you to come by the offices, and so we can show you like we did to the judge.
I'll be there.
Beautiful.
How we work with our, our bus pass system, right, with, for our veterans, it's easy access, especially for those with ADA issues. I mean, they just jump on the RTA bus, and they're off to their appointments, their medical appointments. Um, I'd, I'd love to show you how we operate, and who we work with as far as RTA, so.
And I, and I agree with all that, but at the same time, we ran social services and veteran services out of this building for many, many years, and it was fine, too. Is, is there always a better option? Yeah, but it's also an expensive option for this county that we don't have to undertake, and I think we could absolutely use ARPA money that we've just used for the public defender's office, and I came around on that one, I wouldn't for that begin with, but we have this one-time chunk of ARPA money to be able to go and retrofit space, and I, I think we are absolutely not doing the right thing by, by approving this, because we could use this money, uh, better, better served, and we could still serve our veterans very well, still serve our social services very well, retrofit the space the way we need to, and, and keep them here in the courthouse, but, I mean, I.
And Commissioner, I, I agree with that, wholeheartedly. The problem I have with that, and I think we should maybe do that anyway, is their lease comes up, and they need space now. If we retrofit the construction, they haven't even started, and we're not even through moving things out on the library construction, so that takes time, they need a space right now, so if we want to talk about that in the future, I'm not opposed to that at all.
No, I agree, I agree.
I think, I think we need to prepare ourselves for that.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we have, we have the bus, uh, the buses stopped right in front of the courthouse, and like, Commissioner, as you said, we've run it, uh, those kind of services here for a long time, without any problems, so, but I think we, we should start preparing ourselves.
And I've, if I can say, Judge and Commissioners, if, if we can look at maybe, uh, an easy access point, because we do have a veterans pantry now, we didn't have that when we were here at the courthouse, and it's a big pantry, we refill it every single month, and so that's something that we do, it's easy access for us there, so if we can find something that would accommodate the pantry, that'd be great as well.
I, 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 I'm concerned about how much we spend, but if we could spend that much here, imagine how much more we could do as far as services for our veterans. So, if, if we just say, it's ea, you know, we don't change anything, we don't recoup that back into the general fund.
Spend it for.
That we just spend it in services, maybe additional personnel, right, I know y'all can always use, even a part-time person, uh, if we can incorporate that in, I agree, like, listen, do a year plan, let's say now, we're gonna start aiming for that, and that still may not be enough time, but I think, in the end, you're right, if you add it up over the years and multiply times the growing rate, that's a lot of money that we could have put back into social services and the veterans. Now, the hard part is making sure that we bind future courts to do that, which we know we can't, but it, it, that may be the benefit if we do that, right? So I support what the judge says, is we're just out of time, but if we can, if we can guarantee that amount when we move you back, you know, short, you know, the differences in the cost for the ARPA funding and all that, but we can put that into.
Services, your facility, yes.
Then I think that, that's, that's gonna help you all out, serve the community so much more, so, uh, just my thoughts, just spitballing here, but, uh, I, I do see where there is a benefit to, to bringing them back in. I know it's a great facility, it's a great location, but I'd like to recoup that money somehow and put it out into direct services.
I'd just like to say, we have fifteen, sixteen people working out of our office, and JJ has four, three or four at a time, so we've got a, I don't know what space would be available here, but we have to keep that in mind, um, you know, the amount.
And you are doing it very well in a very confined space, I saw. Yes, thank you very much.
Well, I don't think we're do, we're looking at doing it now, but, you know, I think.
Next year, this lease is for one year.
Build it by next year, like you say, you build it, they'll come, right?
Hey, I'm thrilled, I, I haven't gotten anywhere before, I'm, I'm, this is awesome, I mean, that's a great suggestion, John, that's a great.
So we may add that to the motion.
Well, if, if the motion is to extend it for one year and move them back and retrofit space in the courthouse, I'll make that motion, because I, I just think that's the way to do it, and there's.
And allocate ARPA funds to pay for it.
Right, and our, and right, for the retrofitting, and then, and, as John said, and to use this for veterans services and social services, that money that they're spending on the lease.
Oh, you add all of that in one motion?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great, I mean, that's.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I don't want to repeat that, did you get it, Karen?
You want me to do it again? I'd be happy to, I'm, I'm fired up, okay.
Do it, do it, do it, make it, make it, make sense, though.
The motion would be to exercise the first option term to extend for one year. At the end of that one year, both social services and veteran services will move back to the Nuasis County courthouse with retrofitted space using ARPA funds for that retrofit, and the amount that we're spending on the rent would be split between veteran services and social services for veteran services and social services.
And we have a second?
Second.
All the, um, Commissioner Hernandez already seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay, moving on to.
Thank you, Judge.
You're very welcome, thank you. Item number seven, discuss and consider authorizing the county judges' remaining ARPA funds for oil belt improvements. I have selected this park because I was instructed by TAC that these are easy, and they are all very much approvable for ARPA funds. This is a large park, it has ten different fields, you have boys and girls that play there, you have Little Miss Kickball, you have baseball, they have national championships. This park has been ignored for years and years and years because we didn't have funding. There are a couple of very big things that have bothered me about this park, because I do go there, my grandkids have played there, my son-in-law played there as a kid, it is out in that area, but. One of the things that caught me about this and was a big concern to me is, and I know you have to do what you have to do in the past with time and resources and money, but the restrooms are out in the middle of the parking lot for little kids walking out into the parking lot. Absolutely saw that as a safety concern and a major issue out there, the concession. The concession stands are all need to be, I think they've been condemned basically. There's, there's some major problems out there. So, it needs a lot of work. I am requesting that all of my remaining funds go towards that.
How much is that?
How much?
I have three million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars and four, one, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. Yes.
Three million for the park?
Yes, and.
Judge, I want to.
Is it an indoor complex?
It is, no. But from what I understand, and we're going to go out and we're going to talk to some people. I'm understanding with a large facility and this many fields that it could even need an additional million. So, I may be coming back begging for y'all for additional funds. I just think this is a project, we do have this opportunity. Hasn't been done for years and years and years. And I would request that you all allow me to do this project. We have a motion and a second discussion. Yes, Commissioner.
I just wanted to add, I want to thank you for doing this. When I first came into, into this Commissioners Court, Prison One, I looked at it and I spoke to some of the directors there, like Jerry Begtek. And I asked them, how can I help? You know, I know it needs fixing. So, there's no way I was going to have three million dollars, okay? So, I'm glad from now that you're here, we're joining forces and we can get this park done. Because it, like you said, that park and others have been neglected for a long time. So, we need to get them up to par so our public from Precinct One and anywhere else in the county can come and enjoy those parks. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on, Little Miss Kickball and other baseball teams that are coming in.
Up ball, baseball.
So, so, thank you very much, Judge. I appreciate your help and it's well accepted. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Commissioner, did you want to, did you want her to put a dog park out there? Just kidding, I'm just.
They do have thousands, they have over thousand kids that play in these parks every year. And I know this is leased to the oil belt, but it is not exclusive to them. They have Wednesday night oil belt games and then the public and I know adults play out there as well. It is open to everyone. It is a huge facility and I think it benefits the community a lot. And I'm very happy to be supportive of this. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
That's very cool.
Three million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred.
Judge, excuse me, if I may add, we are very proud of our oil belt teams.
Absolutely.
For several years, they've won the World Series.
The World Series.
So, they've done very well and we, they deserve a well park, a listed park, I mean, the World Series Park. The World Series Park.
Yeah, that's true.
World Series Park, exactly. They've won it a couple of times and those kids play there. They're really good. Okay, and moving on to item number eight. Thank you all. Discuss and consider authorizing payment to Hagerty Consultant for outstanding invoices related to the American Rescue Plan Act, funding administration and other related. And I believe Commissioner Gonzalez, you have this and Lulu is here.
Did you get that summary that I asked for?
Yes, you have. I give it to Peyton.
You got it?
Okay, I have an extra.
Uh, maybe, hold on.
I have extra copy.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, it was in the stack. I'm horrible. I didn't see that. No, she get, I'm sorry, that's my bad. And Judge, what I, when I met with Iday briefly on this yesterday and just said, could you please just give me the court a total of what is undisputed so that we can pay the undisputed amount?
Very good, yes.
Then dispute the rest of it. And that was what I'd asked her for. Because when I looked at it, I just didn't, I couldn't, you know, figure out what we owed and didn't owe.
So, you're saying the seventy-two thousand is undisputed?
Well, I don't know. I'm going to let Iday tell me what this says because I, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yes.
I just, she gave it to me earlier and I just didn't see it. So, that's on me. But I, so is that what?
They're just part of it. They're just part of it.
Right, but I mean, how much is undisputed?
Seventy-two thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. So, the one in the middle, that is the number that it should be paid. And then Lulu and Jeff went through the invoices. So, they can explain exactly what is the inconsistencies with invoices that we're going to dispute, the hundred and twelve thousand.
Okay, so then my motion would be to pay the undisputed amount of seventy-two thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars today. If there's, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And not pay the one hundred?
Well, I want to hear from that.
We have a motion and a second to pay the undisputed amount of seventy-two thousand, four hundred and thirteen. Is there any other discussion about the undisputed amount that we owe? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Now, let's talk about the questionable.
Yeah, I've got to go to bathroom.
Any question?
What are we waiting on, on the outstanding invoices? What is the question here? Yes, Lulu, you passed this out, your.
Yes, I'm sorry. We haven't received December's. I have not received December's twenty-twenty-two invoice for my review. And we just received February's Friday.
They've just skipped over December because we have January's invoices?
Correct.
So, okay, so on the, on the amounts in question, it's January twenty-two, March twenty-two. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, there's amounts on those.
On these invoices, like some of them were disputed and some of them weren't. So, what's the dispute, I guess?
Oh, okay. So, the dispute is I need to, I, what I'm trying to do is what they're submitting on their summary, I want to correlate it with documentation, which I have not seen. So, and I know that there's some that were just, you know, nothing was circled or anything like that. But it did not have, was it performed on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
So, you're waiting on backup to justify, because I saw these and I went through them and it's a huge stack, right? And it's really hard and I see all this stuff circled and some crossed out. And so, it's really hard, you know, for me to understand. And then there was an amount on one, let's say for fifty-eight thousand, that was cut down to twenty-four thousand. Not cut down, but, but that's the undisputed amount. So, what is it that y'all still need so that we can clearly tell Hagerty, look, we're not telling you we don't owe you this. We're just telling you, we don't have the backup to know whether we owe you this or not. Do they, do you believe they know what they need to give you? Jeff, I mean, anybody?
Yeah, I mean, I would assume they know what they need to give us, yes, because we've told them.
Okay, so you're, but you haven't gotten, you or Lulu or Iday, none of y'all have gotten what you need to approve these bills?
That's correct.
Okay, that's fine then.
And Commissioner, just.
That's your word on that.
And beyond the backup also, and Jeff, you can explain. Each, all these invoices include like, it's work authorization for ARPA. But if you look into the invoices, they're also combined COVID and ERAP. So, it shouldn't, they have to separate that. So, that's why we going through it and say like, no, you shouldn't be charging the county for COVID to pay you with ARPA money. There's two different work authorizations.
Two different, yes.
Fair, that's fine. Then I would make a motion to.
I have a.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to, for discussion, I was just going to make a motion to, but go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead and make a motion for discussion.
For discussion.
I was just going to say, we'd make a motion that we bring this back when you have the backup necessary. And, and, and in any of it, in other words, you can piecemeal it if you want to. Because if you get some more dis, let me take this back.
We need to pay them as soon as we get the backup instead of waiting.
Don't hold all of it, right? So, my motion would be to, to bring these back in whatever manner you need to bring back, piecemeal or not, to pay as you no longer dispute them. That would be the motion.
Understood.
How long, okay, I second the motion.
So, it's not that there's lack of communication. I have communicated with Hagerty. Also, you submitted a letter.
Right, you know, the famous letter that our office sent out. But yeah, we have been communicating with Hagerty. We're trying to get down to the nitty-gritty on this.
I believe you.
Get some itemized backup.
You know, and Jeff, I want to thank you and Lulu for, and Nadia for working really, really on this. I know you've done a lot of work. I know you've done a lot of reading, a lot of research here, you know. And I commend you for, I don't wish a headache that you had from doing this thing here. But I know, Jeff, that you also sent a letter, a couple of letters at one time to Hagerty advising them that they had a timeline.
That's correct, Commissioner.
And then they responded to that correspondence.
They, well, they sent us information, but they sent it piecemeal. They didn't send it all by the due date. That's accurate. They did send it piecemeal. You know, it has me coming in.
Okay, what we're doing is, and I'm glad you said piecemeal because I think we have to put a deadline to this thing. What we owe them, we owe them. They need to submit whatever we owe them and we need to cut them off. Like we did, the same thing we did a while ago, you know, we owe somebody the money, it was pay them. But if we don't owe it, don't pay it. I mean, if they can't provide documentation, you know, because I read the documentation and, you know, here we hire somebody to do work for us, right? I mean, I hire you to work for me and I'm paying you for the work you're doing. So, I expect for you to give me a report, right? Because I'm paying you.
Sure, that's fair.
Then you're going to come back and charge me to give me a copy of the report that you're supposed to give me anyway. Or you're going to charge me for making copies of that report. How does that work? I mean, you know, why are we paying for that? I mean, they're charging us thousands of dollars to make copies.
Of the invoice we should have already received that we didn't get.
Oh, we're looking for this invoice. We spent so much hours. We're looking for this, you know, we're putting everything together. How do you, I mean, we paid you for the services. You should provide us those documentations, right? If you didn't, why are you researching those stuff? Why are they doing all this research? Six hours, seven hours. So, I think those are the things we need to look at because I don't, I don't feel we should pay for anything that they owes, you know. And they owe those reports, the documentations. No, this is on them. I mean, we paid them for, we hired her to do a job and they should, part of that is giving us a report.
There's a gentleman named Kevin Fuller that works for Hagerty and we're trying to set up a meeting with him basically to ferret all these things out, so.
You know, and I think, Judge, at the end, probably at the end of the day, maybe before the tenth, maybe I'd like to, you know, kind of have Jeff and Lulu meet, have a meeting with Hagerty, you know, and come up with a solution and say, look, if we can't prove what we owe you, this is what we owe you and that's it. We need to, we need to cut them off at one point.
Can we put a deadline on if they don't produce the invoices, then we're, I mean, if they did the work, it's kind of.
If they did the work, then unless there's something in the contract that they concede, you know, if we don't bill you by a certain time, we don't bill you.
In the future, we would like that in all of our contracts with people, this, they need to have deadlines. They should, they have an obligation on their end as well to give timely invoices. I do understand sometimes the supply and paperwork getting turned in, but this is very out of hand, yeah.
How to handle this, Jeanie, when they're also charging us for other programs that we never approved in Commissioners Court? You know, they were dealing with NCDC, they were dealing with the peer, they were dealing with everything else that we never approved them to do that. But they were doing all those things and they're charging.
I think those are being, that's being taken out, right?
Right, I mean, technically, we're talking about the ARPA stuff, but you're correct. They were billing under different work authorizations is what you're getting at.
Commissioner, I don't know if you recall or not, we had them on Zoom and somebody here asked a question to Hagerty and Hagerty's response was, we only answer to the judge, to the former judge.
Listen to me.
So, so that was their answer. So, they've been very disrespectful to this court, okay? And I think we should really take them to task, you know.
Well, we just want to, we just want to clear this thing here. I know, Jeanie, I don't know how long, it's like the other ones. I don't know how long we dragged it. I mean, we can't be doing this for a year, you know, piecemealing, piecemealing. It's got to be a time where we say, you know what, if you can't produce, you haven't produced it the last six months, you don't have it.
So, there is no other motion on the other part, other than a direction for them to get together and have a meeting with Hagerty to get this resolved?
And to bring it back as, as you get invoices resolved.
Yes.
Because they become undisputed.
Right, got you.
Okay. So, we don't need a motion for that or anything?
We've already made it.
All right, the first part, we already paid and got that motion, yes.
No, we already made the motion and seconded it.
Paid for correction. We have a motion and second.
Can we repeat it again, Judge, please?
Yeah, please.
The motion, I'll try it again, the motion. That was the law, the motion was to.
No, you already paid.
No, the motion was to take the disputed bills back, work with Hagerty, get whatever it is necessary for you to make them undisputed. And as you get them undisputed, bring them back for payment at that point. I probably can't repeat that a third time, so.
Yeah, I hope you got that, Kara. We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Gonzalez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Yeah, I can make another motion though. Jeanie, I don't, this, I mean, again, I want to bring back the piecemeal thing. When, when do we stop putting this piecemealing together? I mean.
At this point, we don't have a choice.
You know, I mean.
You're saying we don't really, you can't not pay somebody if.
Well, we don't know, I mean, if they can't provide us something that they did it, how do they, how do they know we did it? I mean, I mean, because they say they did something, that means they did it.
Well, that's, that's what we're figuring out now. But as far as a blanket rule about when do you stop, that's a very individualized, fact-specific question, so.
So, we just don't pay no more until they show us something?
Right.
Well, we're not paying.
We have to look at what the requirements are in the contract and whether they are fulfilling those in documenting their billing.
Teresa would like to speak also real quickly.
Excuse me, judging commissioners, I just wanted to make a note that the invoices from Hagerty regarding COVID and regarding the winter storm, they were also pulled for additional backup by Commissioner Gonzalez. And it's my understanding that they're ready to process. They've been reviewed by ELC and they're going to be on the agenda for May the tenth.
Okay, so they're not.
So, it's different from the ARPA that you're discussing, but I just wanted you to know that those will be on the agenda for May the tenth, which will be the final billings.
But that was for COVID?
Yes, sir, for COVID and the winter storm.
Right, not for ARPA though?
No, sir.
Okay, yeah. The winter storm, that should have been closed already, but I don't know what. Again, I saw some bills there, Teresa, but I don't know what, again, they're going back and trying to pick up some charges. You know, we just got to be careful what they send and look at it. Because what I, what I saw there in the winter storm, I saw in the, in the COVID, you know, it kind of crosses over to ARPA. You know, and I think what we're paying ARPA, they were charging us for that in ARPA, they were charging us for it in COVID. So, I don't know if we paid it twice at one point or not. But I think we just have to look at real good at the invoices that they send us and what the dates are and make sure they're not, they're not also in the ARPA funds.
And we need the total separation of those two. Yes, absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on, thank you. Moving on to item number nine, discuss and consider approving payment of outstanding invoices from ICE engineers for October, November and December of twenty-twenty-two and January twenty-twenty-three for the tri-county drainage study. This is pending backup, but I understand they have received some of the backup. Have you, Anna?
We did receive the backup that was being requested, but based on that, it was incorrect, which caused the invoices to be incorrect. So, I'm communicating with ICE and they're going to have to revise those invoices.
Okay, so I'm going to probably do the same thing I did before with the other ones. That we approve payment pending on the corrections of the invoices and the backup.
Okay, just not these invoices that are attached because those are incorrect. So, once I get the correct ones, I can submit it through special motions and they'll be.
Yes.
Well, hold on, hold on. This is a little different, right? I mean, you're saying these are not correcting, so we can't pass these because they're not correct.
That's what I'm saying, not these, but when they do come in corrected, I will submit them as special motions to the auditors as with regular, my cover letter.
I think they're saying the invoice is correct, the backup support is not correct.
Not these invoices that are attached.
Oh, these, well, how do we pay invoices?
That's what I'm saying, we cannot.
Wait, that's what I'm saying, we can't, we can't authorize to pay because these aren't correct.
Not these invoices, no.
So, it's always, as we get them, then we pay them?
Yes, sir. As we get them in and we review them and make sure that they're correct, I will submit it with my cover letter for approval of payment to the auditor's office under special motions.
But then it would come back to us under special motions, right? Okay.
And is this the same issue that we had in the last meeting where there was some confusion between the invoices with Ms. Roth and ICE services separate, right? Wasn't there were some questions on the tri-county drainage study that was on the invoices as well?
Yes, that we're waiting on backup information on, from just that one vendor, ICE.
So, we get one issue and there's so many parts to it. It's like, gosh.
And it becomes a domino effect, like Mr. Feminist faded, you know.
Thank you.
So, and again, let me ask the same question on the last one. Are any of these correct that we could pay to get them some payment? Because no, none of them, okay, fair. All right, that's fine. Then, motion to. Motion to, want to table it until the May 10th meeting?
Yeah.
Or, I mean...
Or just put it under special motions?
I would just put it under special motions once I receive the corrected invoices.
And you'll use a report on the 10th, or you don't, okay.
Add it to the agenda with the 10th from the special motions check register.
Because I will be getting it and then submitting it in by meeting their deadline.
I will sign off afterwards for them to do the check, yes.
So then we would just motion to table this indefinitely, and you're just going to put it back on. Okay, so I would make a motion to table this indefinitely, and you're going to just put it on a special motion.
Yes, we have a motion to table indefinitely, and for Anna to put it in special motions. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Item number 10, discuss and consider the fire marshal position and whether the vehicle and other assets assigned to this department need to be reassigned in order to be utilized and other related matters. I know one of the issues on this is the job description, and it has been updated with, with help from the fire department out there on the base, and Chief Clack as well, his input, and then Commissioner Gonzalez added some wording in there for the, the job description to go out. It was sent to all your offices for review. I think that is a separate motion that we will have to vote on as well, so I would make the motion since we presented it to accept the job description as changed for the fire marshal.
Second, this is a position, so we're going, I'm going, I'm going to table the position.
We're tabling the position, we're doing the job descriptions.
Okay, so that's, there's been a motion second, so discussion, so...
Yes.
I don't know, in other words, I don't know how much time we want to spend on a job description if, if, for example, the court decided we wanted to go a different direction because, you know, one of the things that has been brought up is, do we really, do we need to hire a fire marshal? Or do we need to contract with a fire department and let them do it? Because we had a really hard time getting applica, applications at the pay rate that we had. So one, we'd have to increase the pay significantly, in my opinion, to get qualified applicants. Or do we say to Chief Clack, or Chief Becetta, or the new Fire Chief at CC Fire Department, and say, we'll contract with you with a memorandum of understanding, and you be our fire chief, or fire chief, our fire marshal, and we pay that amount of money that we have allocated for them as a contracted service? Because to me, that, I don't even remember who floated, I think it was Joe that floated that idea, or Commissioner Gonzalez. So I think, I think that's a very pragmatic approach to this because I, I, we had a really hard time.
I agree wholeheartedly, moving forward, and they were the ones that came to us, and we really kind of thought, at one point, I think we discussed utilizing the city's fire chiefs and doing some type of memorandum of understanding with them. But they felt like this, and especially with the growth in industry out in the outer lying areas, that this was a very vital position that was going to be needed in the future and the growth. But I, I think that's an excellent point in going through with them, so if you want to wait on that, I have no... We were going to not put it out for jobs yet, we were waiting to have more meetings with them, so it's not necessary to move forward on the position.
Well, since it says other related matters, I'd like to hear from everybody else because I don't want everybody to spend a bunch of time, and Commissioner Gonzalez already has, but all the rest of us having to go through and dissect more job descriptions i- if in effect, the court feels, I, I, I get that we need someone to do these things. I just don't know that we need it to be internal when we have fire departments all around us that have the abilities to do it. Why are we reinventing the wheel? I mean, we, we've got so many fire professionals in this community that we could, certainly, we could contract with one of them to, to do something like this and, and provide the services needed, and we pay for them. So, but I don't know how everybody else feels.
Has anyone met with them individually to see if they, any one of them is willing to take this position on in their department?
No, because we haven't, I, I don't want to do that without, I mean, in other words, I don't want to spend a lot of time unless I get some direction with the court. I'm happy to, to spend time doing it, but I don't want to do it without court direction either because it's opposite of what the court's voted on before, and I don't think that's appropriate, so that's why I wanted to bring it up here.
One of the other problems that was addressed in this discussion as well is the game rooms needing their inspections done. They're having, you know, a lot of the reason why we had to postpone some of those people with their applications is they legitimately couldn't get people to come by and do their inspections. So that's also going to be a responsibility of the fire marshal as well.
That I have not heard, Judge, because the city should be doing those.
Well, the one, the rural areas...
Not all are in city limits, they're not all, yeah.
That, that was an underlying issue when we dealt with the gaming issue a few meetings ago. That was one part of it, is that dealing with the city's, mainly City of Corpus Christi, it's just so big and complex that everybody had input, and, and getting everybody lined up together at the same time was difficult. That's just one part of it.
Yeah, that's small.
But, but in addition, you know, we, the, our first initial attempt at fire marshal was given firearms. So we need to account for, is that included in here?
That's in here, yes.
No, it's, it's part of it.
And I wanted to ask too, I know that there's been a lot of time put into this, but, you know, Mr. Saleh, our new HR director, I mean, he's got big time corporate experience. I mean, I don't know if he's had a crack at this yet, I know he was just transitioning in when I'm sure most of this work was already done. I would suggest him to look at it as well, if this is the direction we're taking. Because one, that's why we paid him, and he just has such an impressive resume that he may be able to pick out, as much as we, we, we become special to, in, in certain areas, and in HR, the argument is, we got into problems that we did because HR wasn't included enough or didn't give us enough insight. So I would make, I want to, want to make sure that he's been a direct part of this, at least had a chance to review it before we go any further, because he may be able to pick out things that should be included or shouldn't, and that's going to set up, if we go that direction of picking or keeping our own. Or, you know, if we wanted to go the direction you're saying, I don't have a problem having that discussion so we don't really spend more time on this, we've got so much else to do.
Right.
So I would, I would want us as a court to decide where, you know, where are we philosophically going? Do we just feel we can pay someone that's already qualified to do it, or do we seek someone? I think if we get the right job description written out with the right set of eyes to review it, in addition to all the work that's already been done here in the court and outside the court, but if we can have our HR director review it as well, I think he can craft a job description and really help us with recruiting. Because that's, that's one of the reasons why I supported Mr. Saleh is because he knows what it takes to recruit people. We, overall, as a county, and not any individual, just institution, and you know this better than anyone, Commissioner Chesney, we do it very differently. If you go to Corpus Christi, City of Corpus Christi, our experience is, you hire a firm, right? And we don't always have to do that, but you at least get some direction from someone that has specialty in recruiting and doing all the work done for a fire chief, or a police chief, or a city manager. We have always done it in-house, and you could argue, what has our track record been on hiring some, some individuals? Not all, but some, because we haven't been thorough enough, or we haven't had the right set of eyes on how we draw, draw this description. So that would be my concern, is if we come up with a good enough description, then it helps us. I think that's part of the battle right there. I think that we can really go out to recruit someone that we need, if we go that direction. But I want to, I'd like to give it a, you know, shot first to see what can we do? And if not, then, you know, I'm supportive before, I've said it publicly, and the court supports going outside for services, going into a contract with someone, maybe someone individually, some, say, with the City of Corpus Christi or someone else that can do that for us, so.
And you could do it simultaneously, Commissioner, I think, I mean, you could say, you know, do it on two tracks. You could say, let, let the, let Mr. Saleh start working on the, the job description, and let's start having discussions with Chief Clack and Chief Becetta and say, okay, look, this is something we're really interested in doing. I, I get that they, I get that they probably would rather have a fire chief or a fire marshal, but I, I think at the, at the same time, you know, if the will of the court is what the will of the court is, then, then they're, they're professionals and they'll do what, what the will of the court is. And, and, and start with them, because we have two outstanding ESDs, more than two, but we could start with those two and, and have conversations, and let Mr. Saleh start working on the job description and see where we go. And, and then, and we could also have fire discussions with the CC Fire Department if, if, if it doesn't work with the, the ESDs don't want to take it on or don't have the manpower, but I...
The ESDs wanted it so much, so I think that they definitely would be interested that they were, they were willing to contribute to raise the pay scale up so that we could get someone.
Right, or we just pay them and let them, you know, let them...
Yes, I think that we could negotiate with them easily, so.
Anyway, I would make a motion then to simultaneously work on both, letting Mr. Saleh really take a long, hard shot at that job description and, and give us some input, and have discussions with the, the two ESD chiefs, or Chief Becetta and Chief Clack, and, and enter, enter negotiations about contracting with them to have a contract fire marshal.
Want to direct any individual, individual to go have the discussions on our behalf, or?
Well, you're, you're the county judge, but I'm not trying to, I mean, you should, I mean, I would, I would ask, I mean, I'm not trying, I would, you, you would be the natural person.
Motion to accept the job description already, so...
It wasn't seconded, I heard?
There wasn't, it wasn't.
Was it, was it discussed or not?
No discussion.
Yeah, we changed plans, so that's the motion, and I'll...
With direction for the county judge to be the person who has that, I mean, I'm not saying I won't help, but I think you're the county, you're...
Okay, I will do it.
You're the leader of our county, right?
Thank you. Can't wait.
Yeah.
I'm ready. Okay, I'll second that then, and so we have a motion and a second to direct.
I hope we'll have to.
Thank you, thank you. Do you need to repeat that, or you have that?
It was a simultaneous motion for Mr. Saleh to work on the job description and for the county judge to go...
Negotiate with the ESDs and moving forward with the position, how we want to...
Being contracted.
Yes, contract. And any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you.
And then, the, the agenda item, Judge, was on the, I don't know who put this one on, I don't even know what this, was this you, or?
On what?
Well, it was to talk about whether the vehicle and other assets assigned to this department.
Oh, we need, there's another motion in there, the assets that are, Jag put this on.
Go ahead.
It wasn't all, so I put all the matters because there's other matters involved, which would be wanting to be, the equipment.
You want to talk about it?
Yeah. The vehicle that we have there, Michael, is Michael here?
Yes.
Going to come up, Michael, I know that vehicle has been there, what, almost a year, Michael, parked somewhere, I think?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner.
And I think, thinking we need to utilize that vehicle, and we have to, and we get a fire marshal down the road, we can worry about the vehicle then, you know, because it might not be in six months, a year, whatever.
What kind of vehicle is it?
A truck.
It's a truck. It's been fully outfitted, it's red, it's all striped out as the fire marshal vehicle currently.
Wow.
So, and I know there's a couple of constables...
Well, everybody wants it, yeah. Yeah, there's a long list of folks that have called me about that truck.
So we'll have to have a drawing or something.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, let's don't get into that battle.
But anyway, just tell us what we can do, Michael, is he coming, give us an idea of how can we handle this? You know, I don't know who needs a vehicle right now that's, that's walking, that's walking instead of driving, you know? But, but you know, can you look into that to see?
So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure the court is aware, it is very difficult to get a vehicle these days, still. And so if you foresee that you're going to need that vehicle in less than a year, I would keep it just the way it is. We could, we could put county judge on it, let, let the judge drive it around just for...
Yeah.
ELC, ELC.
And, and I don't know if you partnered with one of the ESDs and they decided to take this role on. Would, would they take that vehicle? That's a question. I don't know.
That's a good, that's a good negotiating thing, yeah.
So we just hold it then, just? I mean, I can, we still hold it indefinitely until they tell me what to do with it.
I would try to hold it for at least 90 days to see what we're going to do.
Where is it?
We're going to go.
It's out at the annex yard. Okay, someone's starting it up every once in a while, make sure it's not... Batter's disconnected. Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, but I think 90 days should be plenty of time for us to figure out what we're going to do with it, you know, and then make up what we're going to do.
And see how fast the judge can move.
Okay.
Right, there's, there's also some other assets that they have.
Some guns.
There's some weapons involved.
Yeah, there's some weapons that, that I believe are being held at Constable Precinct Two.
Yeah, that's correct.
And then, but those are just being held and not used and...
Right, they're under lock and key. The reason my concern about that, because when I talked to the constable, I said, I'm getting ready to put them in my inventory. I said, no, you're not putting them in your inventory, that's your inventory. And so, and I think those, those weapons, I don't know why we gave them those weapons, but we gave them weapons.
Beacon.
I'm sorry, we gave them those weapons, and it's two rifles and two guns, and nine, two nine millimeters and two M16s, whatever they are. But anyway, I think those are really something that we can keep at the courthouse. I was thinking maybe the sheriff would hold one of the rifles, one of the guns in lock and key, not to be used, but in lock and key in case we ever needed something, you know, something, you know, we know that there's, there's a set there. Constable, hopefully in precinct one, he's on the other end, well, under lock and key, not to be carried anywhere else, but in the lock and key in case we need it, we can cover both ends of the courthouse, you know? That was my, my situation.
Who are the guns registered to?
So they're registered to the fire marshal.
To the open fire marshal, not the previous fire marshal?
We'd have to pull the paperwork on it.
Because that's a big deal, we need to get that cleared up, if it is to the previous.
They were bought under the county's name.
And I think the reason why they're under Precinct Two is a constable issue because the fire marshal was not a licensed officer. It had to be under a particular officer, and I believe Constable, Constable Precinct Two was the one that actually had the, the license to bring them in. That's why it's under two at the moment.
Okay.
He, well, he was a certified peace officer that held his, his certification maybe under Precinct Two, is I think would be the correct articulation.
That's why they are now with Precinct Two.
I, but I don't know that, I'm, that's what I...
I believe you're correct, Commissioner.
Okay, but he was, he, he was T. Cole or T., whatever that was.
He, he let that certification go.
Yeah, well, we've got the guns, we know about that.
We have the guns, but we definitely need to find out who they're registered under. If it is just Oasis County, or I don't know how you buy a gun and register it just under Oasis County. I'm, I buy guns, I mean...
Can you follow up again on that one, Michael, and give us a report?
Yeah.
But I think those guns should be placed where they belong.
I, I believe that it is under Oasis County. We bought firearms for the sheriff's office in bulk as well.
Oh, that, if you buy them purchasing, then that maybe makes sense, yes.
And we bought from the exact same distributor that we used for the sheriff's office purchase. So, so it was bought...
Just very unusual.
As Oasis County designated for the fire marshal, or? Well, I'd have to look at the paperwork, I, I can't speak to that level of detail.
Can you give us a report on the 10th, we can kind of know what we're going to do.
May 10th, bring it back to...
Well, I, I believe it, was it attached to the agenda item, the list of assets? Yes. Okay, so those are the items there. What do you suggest we do with them? Well, I, what I, my suggestion would be is that the court can designate where, who is going to be holding these items until we designate. I think they're in a safe place right now, technically, if, if the court would prefer it to be.
As long as they'll put them under their inventory.
Well, if they're going to be, frankly, if they're going to be held in that location, then asset-wise, we need to record them as being in Constable Precinct Two's inventory possession. And I can make a motion today that says they're in the possession, but they still are assigned to the fire marshal.
Right.
So that way, there's no confusion later on when you go to pull them back and, and, and give it to whoever. Well, because that may be the case too, I mean, if we do something with these ESDs, they may want, they may want it for fire marshal duties too. I mean, if we bought them for fire marshal, then it all ought to be used for fire marshal in some capacity. Right. Whether it's contracting out and, or whether we keep, keep it. And, and the fire marshal had a safe upstairs for this, for storing these, but we don't have a fire marshal to watch the safe. So that's why, you know, they need to be somewhere, either Constable Precinct Two or the sheriff's office.
They're in a locked safe, and we need someone to watch that.
That's good, because he, he, Precinct Two can monitor them for, you know, as long as they're not put in the cars and all that stuff.
And if y'all, if y'all want to direct the, the constable that they're to be stored only, you know, make that type of arrangement.
Do you have a motion to...
I make a motion that we leave the weapons where they are now for now, and that the Constable Precinct Two will be responsible to keep them under lock and key.
Stored only, not for...
Stored only, not to be used for operations, daily operations.
Stored for the fire marshal position, yes. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
To decide what happens to the fire marshal person.
90 days, we'll see, we'll readdress that when we come forward. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. I think that takes care of everything on that one.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to item number 11. Receive the presentation on Oasis County Hospital District's proposed issuance and sale of certificates of obligation for improvements to the former Memorial Hospital campus. We have a motion and a second for discussion. Can I get something?
That was quick.
Presentation. Go ahead, are you up?
Yes, I am.
Which, which one's the presentation?
Uh, which one is the presentation, Johnny?
This one is, the first one is the presentation, so we need to see what, oh.
Is it the revised?
Is it the revised one? When did you get it to him? Right there.
This one?
Right there, yes. Right there, yes. We don't, we don't need that one up just yet, though.
No?
Okay, we'll get them queued up here shortly. Good morning.
Good time.
Judge, commissioners, thank you all. My name, for the record, my name's John Valls, I have the privilege of serving as the chairman of the board of the hospital, Oasis County Hospital District. And I've got some fellow members of our team with us. We've got our, one of our board members, Sylvia Oliver, is in attendance also, and Mr. Granado is also one of our board members, I think y'all know them. We're presenting a very exciting project today. We are, as y'all have probably noticed, or you've traveled by, across town, you've seen the memorial, the former Memorial Hospital campus is now, is gone. So, the demolition is well underway. We have John Michael with Hanson Engineering is going to give you all an update on the progress of that. We've got Mr. Kramer, our architect, along with the Christus folks. We've got Mr. Dominguez and Mr. Desmond from the Christus system, going to give you a overview of the Hector P. Garcia Clinic as it stands today and the needs for the property and the project that we're developing for the future. So, with the, and y'all, some of y'all attended the decommissioning ceremony we had last October when Christus started the demolition of the memorial campus. That project is well underway, it's almost complete. I think they expect it to be completed in the next short, short months or so. And with, with the hospital coming down, Christus has come to us and, over the last year, two years, give or take, and told us about their needs and expanding the clinic. Actually, when it was first ribbon cut and built, it was already too small for them. So, they need some elbow room, and with the memorial campus being gone now, it's perfect timing to expand the Hector P. Clinic. And we've got some exciting designs on the drawing board for the clinic and the expansion of the clinic to better serve the community in that area. I think this had not just passed out some of the presentations that you're going to be provided with today. One of them is a schematic of the hospital campus. But before we get to that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Dominguez with the Christus system. He's going to talk about the current state of the Hector P. and the future for the Hector P. And then we'll turn it over to Mr. Kramer, our architect. He'll present some of the design schematic, preliminary design schematic. And then beyond him, we'll have Mr. Victor Kidoka, he's our F A. And he's going to talk about the bond financing and how we're going to pay for the project. We'll wrap up with John Michael with Hanson, and he'll give you kind of an updated timeline on the completion of the demolition, okay? And then Mr. Hip is also here to ask for, answer any questions that you may have. So, let me turn it over to Mr. Dominguez.
Thank you, Chairman Valls. For the record, my name is Dominic Dominguez. I'm blessed to serve as the CEO and president of the Christus Bond Health System. Thank you for having me in, county judge, commissioners, thank you. We are blessed in Corpus Christi to have the relationship with your Nueces County Hospital District, Judge, commissioners, the leadership that you just witnessed there from Chairman Valls and Mr. Hip and others is, I think, an example, having been around the block in a few places, an example of how, how a not-for-profit faith-based organization can work with the county. And so, as we look at it, as Chairman Valls said, almost immediately upon entering, the needs of the community continue to grow. And as we look at the evolution of medicine in a very positive way, a lot of the activities that historically have resided in a hospital now reside in a clinic setting. With the talent that is being trained, with the technology that is in place, and with the ability to get to patients out there. We've seen ongoing needs for our pharmacy in particular, and additional rooms to be able to see patients that might be urgent and not emergent. We worked with this court prior to my time, but in a wonderful way that I fully endorse, to commit to the community in a manner of an expansion of its shoreline, a complete redo. And Christus Bond continues to grow with your county and with the surrounding areas to meet the needs of the community all through our city and all through the county surrounding the hub here of Oasis County. The pharmacy area is in sorely need of expansion to continue to meet the ever-growing needs of patients that are in our community. We need to continue to be in a position to care for patients in those areas in a more urgent fashion, not emergent, but an urgent fashion. So, those are some of the needs that you'll see from Mr. Kramer, and I do believe that the hospital district will work hand in hand with them in a manner to continue to assess the needs, but those are two pressing needs at the moment. Thank you very much. I stand ready to answer any questions as the presentation goes on. Craig Desmond is our president of our shoreline campus, which is most connected to, to the activities surrounding the historic memorial. Thank you.
Good afternoon, county judge, commissioners. My name's Jerry Kramer, I'm one of the partners at C L K Architects, and glad to be here this morning and this afternoon, actually sharing with you the plans that we're looking at for the future. And as Mr. Dominguez had talked about, Mr. Valls has talked about, we're looking at how we're going to address the needs, not only now, but in the future. And ways to do that, hopefully in a very economic and good stewardship way. You should have before you a plan that is a schematic plan. Just turn to the first page of that. The way we're going to look at addressing this, as Mr. Dominguez talked about, there are several services within the existing H P G facility that have outgrown their space. And so, those need to be addressed, and how are we going to do that? Those spaces, very specifically, are the pharmacy space that Mr. Dominguez talked about, the educational space within the building, the enrollment area for the hospital district, and then just the need of spaces within the building and how to do that. So, we're looking at moving hospital district spaces, educational spaces, pharmacy spaces. And then they also currently have a sort of a quick care, urgent care piece that we're looking at moving out of that building in order to give us space that we can then use to redevelop H P G and address some of the services that are there. Very specifically, the residency program and the family practice program, which has grown and which has needs there. And then also some of the family practice pieces. So, we would infill that space. And that's what we're talking about in terms of renovation area, somewhere between fifteen and seventeen thousand square feet of existing H P G space that would be renovated. Then we would look at, as I said earlier, moving some of these spaces to a new location. First one I'd like to talk about is basically the Christus piece. That would be a building that would, we're showing here adjacent to the Hector P. Garcia building. That would be a space that would include services such as pharmacy, increasing the pharmacy size. And also, one of the challenges currently with the pharmacy is the drive-up piece. Currently, the pharmacy has only just one drive-up window, it's not as efficient as it could be. And so, we're looking at moving that over to the new building, providing two lanes, very much like you might see at a, an H E B store. You know, because of the number of scripts that they're running through there, this will help improve the flow, help improve efficiency there, and also increase the size of the pharmacy. The second thing we would do in that building would include and increase the educational element that's needed. Education, especially diabetes and other elements within the education pieces, we would expand that within that space. And then finally, we've provided space there to create a urgent care type of setting and element. So, this would be a new building. The building would be somewhere in the range of about twenty thousand square feet. We're looking right now, sort of working back and forth to what the specific size will be, but it would be that space. And then the county, New Oasis County Hospital District would have a separate building. And that building would basically comprise the enrollment pieces that are currently in H P G. It would include moving their current offices that are downtown over to this site, so that their administrative offices would be there. There would include some conference room space, and then also would include some space as a remembrance or memorial of Memorial Hospital. An area that we could create to help us remember the importance of Memorial Hospital in the years for this county as we move forward. So, that building, again, we've just shown a general location for that, and would be, again, approximately somewhere around twenty thousand square feet, plus or minus. What we are trying to do here is group these buildings together, so we keep the traffic around the perimeter of the site, yet allowing pedestrian traffic from H P G to the hospital district to the other Christus building to go without having to pass through any sort of parking areas. And again, this is just the initial concept plan. This takes up a portion of the entire site, but not the entire site. You can see, we've also shown the parking area, so you can kind of get a sense of that, number of parking spaces doing that. The second page, if you flip over to that, I'd just like to kind of give you a sense of the overall size of what it takes up in terms of the space. The second page shows, again, the development on the memorial site, but the space, the clear space that you see to the left-hand side of that is the remaining space that would be available for future development on the site. And that is somewhere around ten acres, plus or minus, that could be used for something, some other use in the future. So, this is the model that we put together to help us build the initial cost of the entire project. And some of those costs, you know, are not only building costs, but infrastructure costs, site work, and then fixtures, F F and E pieces. Any questions?
Looks pretty amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. So, the way Jerry presented it, so we're going to, our mission here and our goal here is to, where the Hector P. is right now, to have that solely for clinical operation. Right now, there's administrative, there's pharmacy, there's a bunch of other things happening, there's classrooms. So, we want the Hector P. as it stands right now to be nothing but clinical. So, that's why we're going to create a separate pharmacy area, a separate urgent care area, and then a separate building with the hospital district offices. Right now, they're running about fifteen thousand prescriptions a month. So, creating more efficiency with the drive-through is going to help folks access their prescriptions a lot easier. And as you know, once you miss a prescription, it's kind of hard to get back on track. So, that's really the goal, is so that the Christus, the Christus can operate the Hector P. footprint right now as solely a clinical facility. And that's why we're moving the administrative and the pharmacy and the enrollment center and some of the other services that are currently under one roof right now. So, we're trying to make it a lot easier for patient care delivery. So, now I'm going to turn it over to Victor Kidoka, Victor's our F A. And he's going to give you an overview of the financing plan for the project.
This is the presentation. Thank you. Thank you very much. Honorable county judge, commissioners, thank you for having me here today. For the record, my name is Victor Kidoka, I specialize in public finance, and I have the honor of representing the hospital district as their bond financial advisor. I have also the honor of managing our Corpus Christi office and San Antonio office and help various government entities go through the financing process. The presentation before you that we handed out a hard copy for you, but it is also on the screen for your convenience, is the financing plan that was reviewed and considered and ultimately approved by the board of managers at the hospital district at their April eleventh meeting to start the process and to start moving forward with the financing aspect of this project. And so, out of respect for your time, I will not go and redo a verbatim presentation that we did for the hospital district, because I know the county is used to issuing certificates of obligation. That's a financing tool that we will be considering moving forward with to finance a project that was related to you. So, we'll just go quickly slide by slide here. The first page after the cover sheet is just a general overview that we shared with the hospital district. The next slide is showing the hospital district, the bond financings that it's conducted in the past. Currently, the hospital district does not have any bonds outstanding. The only tax rate it uses is its M and O tax rate to operate the system. And if you go to the next slide, please, you could see the trend of that maintenance and operation tax rate that the hospital district utilizes. Under state law, they could go up to seventy-five cents per one hundred dollar valuation, but currently, the M and O tax rate for the hospital district is nine point nine cents. As you can see here, ten years ago, the M and O tax rate was just under fifteen cents per one hundred dollar valuation. So, you see a downward trend. The reason for that, as you know, property values within the hospital district and the county have been increasing at that time. And so, it's an inverse relationship, as those property values go up, your tax rates subsequently go down. So, currently, we're at nine point nine cents. And so, just wanted to keep that in mind, that there is a downward trend with the maintenance and operation tax rate. If you go to the next slide, slide four, this is a history looking at the property value trend over the last ten years for the hospital district. In that time, on an annual average basis, we're growing about seven point one percent per year in property value growth. Currently, this current year that we're in, we grew actually fourteen point three percent. So, something that we've been seeing a trend, not only in Oasis County, but also statewide. The next couple of slides are the pro formas regarding the impact to the tax rate for the hospital district if it wanted to finance this project. And so, we ran two scenarios here, and we use the average growth rate of seven point one percent, just for presentation purposes. As you know, once you go past one year and trying to project that, it's very difficult because property values change and we don't exactly know where it is. So, and let me just summarize it here, the next couple of slides, if you could go, go please to slide number seven. You could see here, this is a summary of the performance. What we're looking at is a thirty-year financing. We're looking at attaining a fixed interest rate, and this would be a tax-exempt financing. The impact here, if we were to focus on a thirty million dollar financing, the impact to the tax rate for the hospital district taxpayers is point four five cents per one hundred dollar valuation. So, we're looking at half, less than half a penny to support a thirty million dollar bond issuance. And so, we also ran the same scenario for forty-five million dollar financing, if it goes up to that amount. That impact would be less than seven tenths of one penny, so point six seven cents. And so, what would be the impact to me if I was a homeowner and a taxpayer here, if you're looking at taxable values, for every hundred thousand dollars in taxable value, if you were to look at the forty-five million dollar financing, my monthly impact as a homeowner would be fifty-six cents per month to support a thirty million dollar, or forty-five million dollar bond financing. The next slide is just general information that we shared with the hospital district regarding this financing tool, which is certificate obligation that the county is very familiar with. This is the most efficient tool, we feel, to finance the project that's being considered. Could you go to the next slide, please? This is the general overview of the necessary steps under state law that the hospital district would have to move forward with and able to achieve a successful financing. And if you go to the slide after that, man, please. Here we go, on page ten, these are the general steps and an overview of where we're at currently and where we intend to be as a hospital district to achieve a successful financing. As indicated earlier, on April eleventh, the hospital board received and approved the financing plan that's before you. Today, the county has received information on this financing and the project. And the next agenda item would be for you to consider a note of intent resolution to follow state law and give the taxpayers notice that we are intending to move forward on this financing at a bond amount not to exceed forty-five million dollars. That notice would then appear per state law and on the colored time starting May first, it has to happen consecutively over two weeks. And so, that would appear in the paper on May first and then May eighth. That'll hopefully get us to locking in an interest rate for this financing after we finalize the bond amount, but again, not to exceed forty-five million dollars. Of June twentieth, at that day, we would go into the bond market, lock in the interest rate for this financing. The hospital district will have a special board meeting, finalize those documents, and again, lock in that interest rate. Then we would come back to you at your June twenty-first regular county meeting to provide you the same information for you to hopefully approve that financing as well and lock in that interest rate. Based off of this, the hospital district would then have funds in hand by July twentieth. No meeting is necessary, that's just done via electronic wire. The last page, ladies and gentlemen, is the financing goals. Again, we're not going to exceed the forty-five million dollar threshold, that's the upper limit. We're looking at a thirty-year financing with a fixed interest rate, locking in interest rates June twentieth, and then closing on the transaction July twentieth. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, but the goal is, and the final butler point, which is probably the most important, is that taxpayers and those officials is that we're going to try our hardest to minimize the tax impact as much as possible. The information that you have here in our pro formas, we believe are conservative assumptions, and so we hope to come back to you and hopefully be under that. And as I mentioned earlier, the last ten years, there's been a downtrend or a trend downward on the maintenance and operation tax rate. Our hope is that by the time we get the certified values in July, and after we conducted the financing, our hope that even though you'll have an impact on your I N S tax rate to support this bond for the hospital district, our goal is that the tax rate, as it is today, at nine point nine cents per one hundred dollar valuation, would not go up. Worst-case scenario, it would be the same, if not lower. That's what we're striving for in this financing. We're going to be mindful of the taxpayers and try to minimize the impact as much as possible.
So, what's the impact on I N S?
The I N S for the forty-five million dollar, under these. The INS for the $45 million, under these conservative assumptions, would be about .67 cents, or seven tenths of one penny.
And I know you don't do legislation, but in legislation that impacts the work you do, I'm sure you stay on top of it.
Yes, sir.
There's some movement afoot in Austin to maybe do away with COs, so does that have any bearing on this, if this were approved, would, I mean, I guess the timeframe that you would have would still fall well within anything that would be implemented?
Yes, sir. After the session. Yes, sir, we had that in mind upon direction from the hospital district to move forward with this and develop a financing plan and a timeline, and so we had that definitely in mind. Our goal is to issue the COs and close the transaction prior to the end of the biennium, and so that if there are any legislative changes, then we would be okay.
Now, we've had so many, and I'm really impressed that all the experts that we've had come here, present, and in such a short period of time, it's been very concise, and I appreciate that, from Chairman Valls and our, from your architect, and of course, from Mr. Kidoka, and from Mr. Dominguez. You know, looking at that page too, Mr. Kramer, that you provided with the, with the footprint, right? It gives you perspective, it's almost half of what that 10 acres that you described, which will be empty soon, right? Totally cleared from the old Spahn Memorial Site. And then, right next to it, they have the existing medical examiner's office, so is there, I don't know if you know, or is there any plans for that empty space, or?
As of right now, I'm not aware of any plans for the empty space.
Mr. Valls, Chairman Valls?
Well, we do have some designs on that space for the future, but that would be conversations that we're gonna have with the Christus system. But we've had a conversation with the judge, and so there are some ideas in the works, but we would have to have conversations with the Christus system, they still hold a master lease on the property.
And I think it's just so important to mention that, because I know I've heard a lot of people over the years, especially since, what, 2014, or whenever this, really the first step to all of this really started. And so, I've heard that from several people voiced their concern as far as, well, what's gonna be left, right? Because it was such a vibrant part of our community, such a draw, and all these doctors' offices and other offices that lined and populated the Morgan Corridor there, going between the freeway and, and Port, Port Avenue. And so, it's exciting to see this, right? I mean, just the clinic itself was amazing when we went, when we had the ribbon cutting, and to see all that is there, and then to hear that we're outgrowing it, and the need for the pharmacy, and then the other offices that would be included. I think this is exactly what we need to hear, what we needed for that spot. I personally have always been worried about, was it just gonna be forgotten? What kind of repurpose would be there that the, that the community would be left saying, gosh, we should've kept Spahn Memorial there, I mean, would've been better to have left it there than to bring in something, some unknown. But the fact that y'all are working on this, and the plans that you have set up, you know, really speak to me, and I think the needs that I've heard from the constituents, and so I'm excited about this. I mean, I can imagine what the other two buildings on this site will look like, once it's all drawn up, if this all moves forward. But I thank y'all for being very forward-thinking on this, and keeping in mind that spirit of medical services to a part of our community who desperately needs it.
Correct, that's true. Thank you, Commissioner, we appreciate that. And, you know, part of the creating of the memorial campus going down was to create the efficiencies that Christus required, so when they shifted everything over to the Shoreline Campus and did their massive expansion there, which is wildly successful, this was a perfect opportunity to expand the healthcare delivery to that area. Like you said, a very significant part of the community that needs it, and we do have some designs for the balance of the property. You see the blank space, and we've met with the judge, but, you know, we're not really at liberty to talk about that concept just yet, it's extremely preliminary. But working with the Christus system, I know Mr. Dominguez personally has always pledged that they are obviously gonna be fantastic stewards of the balance of that property. So, we feel pretty good about the property, we feel great about this project, you know, it's a visionary project, the entire board is behind it, and Christus has been coming to us over the last several years, talking about expansion needs and how they're busting the seams over there. This really gives them an opportunity to spread their wings, they're gonna bring in more residents, more training, and just more service delivery for the entire community, but that's really the focus for that segment of the community. So we're real excited about the project.
It's a great project, we're very excited to have those additional services here in our community as well.
Thank you. So, part of the action on the next item is to get approval from the court to allow us to public, to publish the notice of intent to issue COs. We don't know what the number is gonna be just yet, the architects and the engineers, John Michael is gonna come up here shortly to give you the demolition timeline, so that helps us to kinda determine, you know, okay, when possibly could we start developing the site. So we don't know what the number is gonna shake out, but we know it's not gonna exceed the 45 million. And as you know, healthcare nowadays is so expensive, building a hospital or building an expansion, building a clinic, it's just, the requirements of building codes is so much more complicated, so that's why the price tags get up, get up there a little bit. But we're very, very cognizant of the dollar amount, and we're trying to shake out, you know, most of the wants and the needs, so we're fine-tuning it, Jerry, and he's working closely with the Christus team, and they're really fine-tuning the project side, so we're real excited about the project.
Yeah, I told Mr. Dominguez I brought a check with him, what happened? You know?
Well, I can't tell, Commissioner.
He needs two signatures on that check.
I just wanna touch on the, I just wanna touch on the fact again, thanks for Christus Spahn and Christus and the hospital district and the county working together. I think the trademark here, you know, is not what we do next, but it was a trade-off of knocking down Memorial Hospital with the Hector P Garcia Building. That was a big trade-off, and that was something we had to bring to the people and show the people that what we're gonna replace Memorial with is gonna work, and it has worked. I mean, it has worked, now we're gonna, now we're thinking about expanding it, so it is working. And anything we can do better for the community, for the people in that area, that would be great, you know? So I think that while we continue to grow, continue to expand, I think that the first legacy was that we did do what the people wanted us to do, and what we told them we were gonna do, is building the Hector P Garcia, you know, and provide those kind of services at low cost, low cost, or whatever. But I wanna thank everybody that was involved in that from the beginning, you know, it was a challenge, it was a fight sometimes, you know, but, but you know, I think it was worth, very worthwhile. You look at it now, and you know, you think back, and say, you know what, man, I'm glad we did what we did. So I wanna thank you, Christus, I wanna thank the hospital district, county for really joining forces and making it happen.
Commissioner, thank you, Court, Judge, thank you. Having grown up in Rockport, Texas, born and raised in this area, that's sacred ground for a lot of us, that's where grandparents went, that's where our nieces went, that's where folks passed away that are my family. And so we were gonna treat that as, as you speak of, Commissioner, and we appreciate the opportunity to work in a collaborative way, because it's collaborative, not just in here, but with your hospital district judge, in a manner that's better for the community as a whole, and certainly for those that are on the margins. That's what we were founded on at Christus, that's why the sisters came to this area of the world, to serve those that are on the margins, and we're blessed to serve others, but we thank you.
Is John Michael coming up?
So, John, Michael, I'm gonna let you close it out with progress of the demolition.
Well, the buildings are gone, so I don't know what else to say.
Pick up, pick up the pieces up.
Well, Judge Commissioners, good morning. I'm John Michael, I represent the hospital district, and have been doing that for many years. I was the guy that was here many years ago, addressing the court with the condition of the buildings, and it was my recommendation at that time, and to the hospital district, that those buildings had lived their life, and it was time to take them down. And I know that was a very difficult decision for the court at that time, but it was the right decision. So having said that, the buildings are gone. So, they're all down, the only thing left vertical out there are trees and a little maintenance barn over in the corner, and that'll be gone here shortly. So, we're wrapping things up out there quickly, we should be wrapped up completely by the end of July. The only thing we have left to do is to send a survey crew in there next week, this kind of addresses, what do you do with the rest of the parcel? We're gonna send a survey crew in next week and geo-reference all of the drilled piers and some of the foundations that are, will be left out at the site, and will be covered with dirt, so that we know where that is in the future for whoever is gonna come in behind us and do something with that property. So that'll be done next week, maybe the following week, if the rain will leave us alone. Then we'll backfill it with dirt, and we're done. So the end of July, we'll be, we'll be out of there. It was a good decision, very good decision. The Grant McKay, the contractor, demolition contractor for Spahn, has done a great job, Jerry and I work with them weekly, just to make sure things are on track. I think you all have a schedule that reflects everything that we've been doing, so with that, we're done.
Good job. So what kind of motion do we need?
This is on the next one, that was just a presentation on item number 12 is the motion.
Yes, we need a motion approving the.
Discuss and take action on a resolution by the Commissioners' Court of Nuones County authorizing and approving publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation for the benefit of the Nuones County Hospital District and approving an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion.
The effective date is what? Just, do we need to articulate that effective date, or is that?
No, we just need approval. We have the timeline for the publication, Victor, what is the publication?
The timeline was on there, but.
Yeah, okay.
So moved in second.
I have a resolution.
Okay.
Call a question.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, we appreciate, thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have our attorney here as well, if it's okay with y'all, I'd like to go on to executive session.
Thank you, John.
Move the next item.
Can I just do 13 real quick, it's a pretty quick one, but.
Okay, if you wanna do 13 really quick.
Yeah, Judge, this is, this is a mandatory split, once the precinct gets over 5,000, then according to the law, as decided to me by Ms. Sands, this has to be done in April, this is the last, by the end of April. And so basically, I'm just making a motion that we split the voting precinct eight at Waldridge Road, which has been provided as backup, and it, as you'll see, it provides both of them with pretty, pretty close to an equal amount, so they both have the opportunity to grow, so that's the motion to split it according to precinct eight at Waldridge Road.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
Discussion, yes, Judge. Just clarification, 'cause I know that we had that one person who spoke during public comment referencing this issue, that it's a requirement, that's why it's not arbitrary, it's not just because we wanna do one precinct or over another, it's because it's required. And I don't think we have any others, if we do, that would come forward from the county clerk, but yeah, I know, it's tough when people speak during public comment, we can't respond, so I know you and several of us have been wanting to reply to that, and that's the reason why, so if anyone has any questions, it's a requirement, and this will split them up equally, almost identically.
Almost identical.
Pretty close to each other, pretty close by the number, so it's just housekeeping, it's not anything more than that. I'm hoping and assuming it should be a 5-0 vote, you know, bipartisan support on this.
Yeah, and Judge, the new, they'd have a new precinct number, and I don't have that handy, I think Kara's got it, but it's whatever's next up.
Right.
129 or something like that, it's whatever the next one available is.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Now I'd like to move ahead in the, to the executive session, because we have attorneys here, sorry for those that are sitting and waiting, I appreciate your time, but we're going to go into executive session now. It is 12:29. Notice is given that Commissioners' Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there has been past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda items in executive session when authorized by law to do so. Elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Acts authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer. In accordance with the authority of the Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.073, 551.074, 551.0745, 551.076, 551.086, 551.087, the Commissioners' Court will hold an executive session to consult with attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners' Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. Item A, we need to table that, the interviews.
Which one?
Item A.
We were supposed to have tabled, yeah.
Yeah, we should've tabled that before.
It's okay, we'll just do it after, I think you.
We'll just do it afterwards, I'll just read it, and we'll do it afterwards. Specialty items set for 1 o'clock, conduct interviews of applicants, discuss, deliberate, and make selection of special advisor for government affairs and external and internal communications. Item B, consult with county attorney regarding appointing a hearing examiner pursuant to the Nuones County Game Room Ordinance, Section 2.3, to hear appeal of permit denials for game room permit applications and all related matters, Texas Government Code 551.071. Item C, update on obtaining counsel to represent the district attorney, Mark Gonzalez, in the pending removal action, calls number 2023 D C V dash 240244-g, and I assume that would be the same as the 551.071?
That should fall under 071, that's the one where you have outside counsel, correct?
Yes, and item D, consult with county attorney regarding update on any legal matters relating to the potential completion of ABM Energy Services Performance Agreement, compliance with energy savings goals, satisfaction of financial obligations, and related matters, 551.071, and that's it. So it is 12:32, and we are going over to the offices for executive session, so. 2:19, we are coming back from executive session. We have a couple of things to take up from executive session on number five, open session. Item B, discuss and consider appointing hearing examiner pursuant to the Nuones County Game Room Ordinance, Section 2.3, to hear appeal of permit denials for game room permit applications and all related matters.
Judge, I would make a motion to appoint Judge Watts, Pate, and Banyalas as the hearing advisors, subject to them taking that responsibility on.
Subject to them agreeing.
Yeah, based, pending the agreement, the.
Pardon me?
Pending they agree on it.
Pending, right.
My second motion.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. Thank you, the motion passes. On item C, discuss and consider the selection and approval of counsel to represent the district attorney in the pending removal action.
Judge, I'm gonna take on that one, based on our lengthy discussion, and also based on the list provided by DA Gonzalez, to us to consider, I make a motion that we appoint Matt Manning as a counsel for the removal matter, subject to a reasonable hourly rate being negotiated. Further, the attorney shall submit a budget to be reviewed and approved by the Commissioners' Court.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Matt Manning as counsel, as per the DA's list he provided to the Commissioners' Court. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Judge, I think we, I need, can I make a motion to table A? That was the one we were gonna pause on?
Oh, yes.
Indefinitely.
Yes.
Yeah, motion, right, motion to table that indefinitely?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table item A indefinitely, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Going back to our regular agenda, then, item number 14. 3A14, discuss and consider amending amended guidelines for community use of courthouse common areas. This is yours, Commissioner Gonzalez. Do you want to?
14. Where we at?
3A, regular agenda 14. 3A14.
That's mine.
Yeah, the common, common areas of the courthouse.
Yeah. Well, I thought, I thought that we would, I think at the last meeting, we came up with something that we, let me see. They're trying to have some programs in the common area or wherever designated that would help the employees. Do some presentations from different organizations or different companies. And I think that we needed to change those guidelines. And I think the guidelines were changed, right?
They were. This is the corrected guidelines in here. Yes.
And the change was good. I think that we, in order to allow benefits in the future for employees, to allow somebody to come in and provide some, let's call it lunch and learn or presentations and educational, I move that we accept the changes to the policy.
We have a motion to accept the changes to the guidelines allowing people to use the common areas. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. On item 15, this pertains to the same thing. Discuss and consider approval of Prosperity Bank request to host a lunch and learn event for county employees during the lunch hour to learn about a home ownership possibility program specifically designed to help families with their affordable housing needs and other related items.
Based on the motion just passed, I move that we approve this, allowing Prosperity Bank to come in and do a presentation.
So, our second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Item 16 is discuss and consider the next Commissioners Court meeting. You have a list there. And they have included the state of the county on there as well. Is there anything?
Judge, yeah, I am. I'm mentioning Commissioner Chesney earlier. We have such robust celebrations and recognitions that, you know, it takes, takes up quite a bit of time. And I know the practice that the Corpus Christi City Council does is that they actually start that process early before actual council starts. And maybe it's something that we consider, if not at the next meeting, but maybe in a future meeting, that we start maybe 30 minutes early, recognizing the groups, taking photos just with whoever is available or whoever chooses.
So it wouldn't have to be a quorum of people here. It would just be, if you're.
If you're, if you're brought it up or your support of it. And it may make us, it may allow us to move a little bit faster and be able to accommodate more people's schedules that come in in the morning. So just a suggestion, it's something that may maybe require more time to consider. But I think that's kind of one of the best practices to look at within the area. So maybe just something that we don't officially start until nine, like we have designated these last four months. But at least recognize that, I mean, we spend 30 minutes to an hour at least every meeting with proclamations and recognitions. And those are fun and I love them. I don't want to get rid of them. But I think if we could start 30 minutes early, that might be helpful for us.
Commissioners? It does take me 30 to 45 minutes to get everything set up, tested, and ready to go for court. So just making you aware of that.
Okay. So John, I think that's a great idea. I think the celebratory nature, we definitely want to continue that. But we also want to be cognizant of the people who come to our meetings and have to sit and go through all that and business people and elected officials and department heads. So I think it's a great idea that we could easily have it to where they were. In other words, if I remember correctly, when we were at the city, we didn't vote on them. We just, if they're celebratory and recognition only, no controversy, obviously, those would be different, then we could just do them as proclamations. We all sign them in advance. They don't have to have a vote. And that way, if someone can't get here for the 8:30 resolution, but still you wanted to bring someone down or I wanted to, that's, I think that's a great idea. I mean, personally, because we're, so I mean, how do, you want to try that in the form of a motion or?
Does it mean to be motion or just kind of, I dare you get the general consensus of what we're looking for? I don't know. Can we vote on something like that? Can we make a motion? Or have we just kind of given a head nod to court administration to kind of organize that and our county clerk as well for the next agenda?
That would be more like, Commissioner, like a policy. But we can include that into the policy that anything should be before.
Do you, so do you want to maybe just direct her to bring something back for the next meeting and then we'll start at the second meeting? I don't know. However you want to do it. I think it's great because.
That's why I was asking Jenny if there's anything legal that we needed to do on our end to make sure we're doing it properly. I mean, is it just policy or is it more than that?
You're, what are you, you're changing?
Just kind of the start. Like, it's not even the official start time. It's more, we're just kind of designating a time that we can bring in groups that we want to kind of help speed up the process of the overall meeting itself, so.
The city does it on their meetings as well. It just kind of helps.
I think we have to let everybody know.
We need to give them notification and, yes.
8:30, you want to be here. You got a certificate, good pictures, whatever.
Right. And then, but the difference, Jenny, is I want you to understand the difference is to make sure because when we, if we did them at the city, when we did them at the city, and at that, the city was different because only the mayor could put something on the agenda, right? It's different over here. But, which I think it's better over here. But the, but the situation is, is that she would have, you'd have proclamations and she would do the proclamation and they would do that for about 30 minutes. And it wasn't even like enough, it was, I don't, I think, I don't even know if they posted it or what, but there wasn't a quorum required to do it because it was celebratory. There weren't votes. So it's more of a, how do we do that? That's, so that's a little bit of a change, right? I mean, chances are, we're all gonna probably still be here at 8:30, but we don't want there, if two of us can't get here for 8:30 for resolutions, we don't want the meeting to not be able to go forward, that part of it.
We don't require a quorum though.
Right. And I just want to make sure she understands. There's a little bit of a difference.
Then there wouldn't be a, it would just be a presentation and it wouldn't be an action of the court.
You could just work with Ida on how to post that or how to put that forward or whatever. And then the resolutions would be at 8:30. And we know that. And all those people that we want to bring in can come and go and get out. And the regular meeting starts at nine and no one's delayed.
Yes, we can work together on that.
And if the resolutions don't require a vote, we would just sign off on them. Would that be okay too? That's a little bit of, that's a change, right? Or do we just do certificate of achievements? That's what we're asking. I think that's what he's asking is how, how do we do that without making it a, do we have to vote on something? Or if we have to vote on it, then we all have to be here.
So let me look at that about how you can structure those certificates and things.
Okay. John, is that what you're?
Yeah, I think that will work.
What about, what about if each commissioner that wants to present something just notifies whoever they, whoever they're talking to, please be here by 8:30?
Right.
You know, and that's it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because we currently vote on resolutions. We didn't vote on resolutions at the city. We have, we don't vote, we don't, so if we did them as certificate achievements or resolutions that we just pass something that says we're no longer going to vote on celebratory resolutions, we're just gonna have them, do them. Everybody signs them. We do it 8:30. And maybe it's 8:30 to 9:15. I don't know. But 8:30 to 9:00 is probably a good enough. That what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea. I think it'll be more efficient.
Good suggestion.
Were there any other dates or anything on the court meeting dates and related matters? No? Goodness. I, I know this is a little bit off, but Mr. Gonzalez, I saw you came in late. I'm not sure if you heard our announcement. We appreciate the list that you turned in. And we did have a motion and pass on your behalf to select Matt.
Manning.
Manning. I'm sorry to say mooring. I know I'm Matt mooring too. I saw you come in. I just didn't want you to wait and think that we hadn't done that. I think we did it before you got in, so just want to let you know.
Thank you, Judge.
We appreciate you sending the list to. Yes. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Moving on to item B, grants. B1. Discuss and consider approval of resolution in support of an application for the Indigent Defense Improvement Grant Program available through the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. Thank you. Good afternoon.
We're gonna read that. We are applying for the Texas TIDC Improvement Grant with the Indigent Coordinators. This will be the fourth year. It is, it was tabled last court because I guess you, y'all needed some more history on it. So I provided all the history on the agenda as the first year was a 20 match. The second year was a 40 match. The third year that we're on, it's a 60% match. And the one that we are going to apply is 80% match.
That's the $104,928. And do we know where that money's gonna come from?
$139,000.
Oh, $139,000.
$904.
Are your grants matches from, for these? I'll come from the general fund.
Wait, and this is?
And I have the program coordinators here to answer any questions you may have that operate the grant.
Is this the fourth year? And there's one more year left after that? Or is this the fourth year?
This is, it is four applying. So the next one, the one we are in right now is the one with the 60% match that will end September 30th, 2023. The resolution that we are submitting for an application will start October 1st, '23 to September 24.
And how much, and what's the match on that?
It's an 80% match.
80% of us?
The match would be 139,904.
And this is, that's, and that's, how much are we paying now? What's the increase?
80%. Oh, $30,000, about $30,000.
Another $30,000 that we have to pick up on the top of what we're already paying? That's, yeah. And this is one of those ones we talked about where all these things are starting to fall off.
And this will be the final year that we can apply for this particular grant of Indigent Coordinator.
And what does this grant provide?
And I have them.
Hi, Judge and Commissioners.
Hello, how are you?
I'm Emily, the court administrator. The IDC coordinators work under me. We do all the indigent defense. We average about 900 appointments.
Can you pull that up a little bit? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. That's okay.
We average about 900 appointment, court appointments a month for indigent defendants.
So, but what is the public defender's office? What does that have, what's the difference?
They're going to be handling mostly mental health issues.
Public defenders and you're gonna, you.
We're gonna be working with them also. We will be appointing to their office on the ones that.
Right. Because when we did that, we did it for, we took mental health, but it was supposed to be everybody. It was supposed to be not just mainly mental health. It was, we applied for more and committed to more to include mental health, but the original was for indigent defendants.
Correct.
So I'm trying to figure out how this isn't a duplication.
We're appointing the attorneys for the.
Right, but the judge is gonna, so once the public defender's office is in place, then the public defenders would get all of them. Why would they, why would they not?
They're only getting a percentage. They're getting a percentage of the mental health, 75%.
25%.
Huh?
25%.
Of nor, of.
Of mental health.
Non-mental health.
They're getting what?
25% of non-mental health.
And then 75%.
They don't get everything.
Yeah.
They only get 25% of non-mental.
Non-mental health.
Wow.
25% of non-mental health. But I'm saying, what I don't get, I guess, is why we need this. Sorry, but why we need this? Why can't the judges appoint lawyers? If you're, you're saying you're making the appointments? Right? So when I was a judge, nobody made an appointment for me. I appointed the lawyers.
At the time of magistration, we have 24 hours to appoint lawyers when they're requested. And so we're working with magistration to get those done. It used to be done, the majority of them at magistration, correct?
Right. But, and then why couldn't a magistrate appoint?
Who should be done, Mr.?
I'm trying to.
People doing it.
Say again?
We have two people currently doing it. That takes a lot of time.
When you say appoint, you're picking the lawyers or you're doing the paperwork for lawyer?
We're doing the paperwork and using the wheel to appoint.
I don't, I don't think I ever took, I don't, maybe that wasn't here when I was there because we did that all at my court. I mean, when I was there, and I haven't been there in a long time, so maybe this wasn't there. We did it, we, my court manager appointed everybody. So I'm just trying to figure out. I think we need to maybe talk to the judges a little bit more about this or something because I don't.
I don't know. I just think eventually it's gonna, I think that the public defenders and that, your program, somehow it's gonna have to come together, you know, and maybe they can add another staff person or something. But, you know, when, I know that magistrate used to handle all of it before. And I know it's gotten bigger.
One of the other jobs that we've picked up is when cases are dismissed or no charged, we're notifying the attorneys because that wasn't done before. And so that then gives them the check to do their court appointment fees and that case getting off.
Commissioners, sorry. So at the time of magistration, if a person is arrested for five different charges, which is very normal now, one person, those, if they have felonies and misdemeanors, a felony may fall out of Judge Chassid's court, but they'll also pick up three misdemeanor cases. So at that time, during magistration, we get the paperwork and we appoint for all cases. Also, any pending cases that they have that they do not have a court-appointed attorney on. So within 24 hours, and the magistrates used to do it, but there have been a lot more duties added. The inmates never used to get a copy of who they were appointed, who their attorney was. Those are mailed out daily. Last month, we had 900, I'm sorry, two months ago, we had 900 court appointments. The last month, we had 1,200 court appointments for inmates that were mailed out and that were appointed. And that doesn't include the ones that did not request court-appointed attorneys. So we go through all the magistrate paperwork from CDC, also from the ones that are magistrated here in the county jail.
Don't you think, and I thought in magistrate at one point, you've had two misdemeanors, two felonies. I mean, their job was, they called the judge, hey, why don't we just play them out on the misdemeanors and just go with the felonies? I mean, why are we dealing with both of them at the same time?
It used to be like that, Commissioner. Now they're asked to take care of their felonies first. And usually they'll do a plea agreement with the misdemeanors. If you plea out to this felony, we'll dismiss the misdemeanors. But they are, we do have cases too where they're pled out in misdemeanor court and it's not taken care of with the felony. There's defendants that are held in jail right now for just misdemeanor cases.
That's the problem.
And their felonies have been taken care of already.
That's the problem. That's why you should take care of the misdemeanors first. I mean, I would, it was easy to plead somebody out to misdemeanors.
Correct.
If they call the JPO, they call the other judge, and the judge says, hey, you got a felony to charge? Yeah, I'll plead him out. Yeah, then sign, let him sign the agreement and we'll plead him out.
And now it's, I guess they want to go for the bigger charge, the bigger shark.
And they should. It's okay. But we should always dismiss the misdemeanors first.
Correct.
I don't know, I don't know how the system works, but now, but I think we need to look at it.
So what's the total cost of this program and how, what's the total cost of the program? And, and right now, I forget the, moving forward for just a minute, right now, the total cost of the program? And how much is grant funded? And how much are we paying for? Write, write this minute.
That would be for the FY '22. So that would be $102,438 and the county match is $68,292.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, no, that's '22. Let me look at this month. I don't know.
So.
$102,000?
For 10/1/22 to 9/30/23. The state will pay $69,952 and the county match is $104,928 for a total of $174,880.
174?
880.
Okay, so, and when we started, it's gone down, right? It started where they were paying more and we were paying less, right?
The first year of the total grant award was $168,901. Second year is $177,30. The third year that we're. The third year that we're in right now is $174,880.
Well, no, but some of that's us. You're not breaking it down for me, so...
Okay.
In other words, what, what was, it's, so, this is year three, and, and it's, county's paying 104, grant's paying 69, okay? So, do you have the breakdown for...
Yeah, I put it all on the agenda as requested on, on the agenda item, but I can, I have it here.
So, year, year one was, just give me that same breakdown.
Okay, the state, $135,121, county match, $33,780.
Wait, you're going fast. $135, what?
$121.
That was state?
County, $33,780.
Thirty-three.
Seven-eighty.
Okay, and then year two?
$102,438.
State?
State. County, $68,292.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I, I'd really like to see a, I'd like to, I'd like to get a list of all of these that we have, because we have, any grants like this that we have, I'd like to get a, a list of all of these and how they're falling off, because these are gonna be the budget challenges that Dale's gonna come tell us about, that we have to find another 30,000 here, another 40,000 here, another 50,000 here, ARPA money starts to fall off, another 100,000 here, another, so...
Yes, these are presented to the auditor. They request what matches are coming up, or, and, you know, what we have applied.
No, we need a break, we need a breakdown, because I don't know how many more of these we've got like this, but it's, we, it seems like we've got several. And I, I just, maybe I'm understanding, but it just still seems a bit of a duplication of services here, but I, I don't know.
Yes, and the, the PDO is part of the TIDC as well.
The what? Don't, you gotta give me...
Texas Indigent Defense Commission.
Is part of the what?
TIDC. The P, Public Defender's Office, the other grant that you're referring to, theirs is a two-year, 100%, and then it'll go through the same session as two.
Right, so, yeah, we're, I mean, we're, yeah.
With the paperwork that they do out of this office, like you were talking about the cases, does that help with our CJUST numbers or anything? Would that be beneficial? Is that a benefit to the county on top of what they do?
I think it definitely gets people out of jail faster and save on that aspect. And hopefully, get their cases resolved when they have counsel. The quicker we get them.
Just find, trying to find another example of where it might help.
Yeah, I, I'd really, how, when's this, when's this due?
September.
The resolution is due, I think, by May 10th.
We have to submit by May 10th?
The resolution. I mean, I can, it's...
Meaning we want to do it again?
To, you're supporting the application.
I mean, I don't know.
We can submit it, and then once it's awarded, you can, I bring it back to the court, and you decide to accept it or not.
And you know that probably if it's issued, it might, it might just go away, period, right? I mean, it's the way, I mean...
Right, this will, this application that we want to submit will be the last opportunity for the Texas Independent, Indigent Defense Commission Improvement Grant for the Indigent Coordinators. So, it's totally different. We have also the TIDC formula grant that we get automa, automatically based on the cases that they report on.
I think, I don't know, I just think we need to check with the public defenders and see, how can we, how can we rely on both of those together, you know? I mean, they're doing 25% already, you know, none, no, none, uh, mental health, and they're 75 mental health. So, if they get another body on there, you know...
Yeah, I think the only problem that you're gonna have with that is the number of attorneys we have on the wheel to take these 900 appointments a month that you're putting on the public defender's office, so we would need more attorneys, and their office would be my thought.
Two people are doing it now, so you got one that goes over to the public defender's office to do the wheel or whatever, but, I mean, that's what you're saying, I guess.
Oh, I thought you were talking about cases, all the cases going to public defenders.
Talking about processing them again.
So, the judges, just, judges aren't appointing people anymore?
On occasion, but not under normal circumstances, we do the appointments.
Huh, certainly, okay. I, I, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Gonzalez, I think we gotta figure out...
Do you want to bring this back, then, or are you in such a motion?
I mean, not only this one, but I think we gotta really look at hard, because the public defender one is great for two years too, and boy, that one falls off, and that's, that's millions. I mean, that's, that's big, big, big dollars we're talking about. So, there's gotta be a way to do this to make sure it's not duplicating services, and that county doesn't get stuck with a humongous increase coming up, so... What do you, you want to, Commissioner, are you gonna table it, or what are you gonna do? I mean, if you're saying...
Well, why don't you, I mean, why don't you go ahead and submit the, the resolution for the application, and then, I'd just like to have a breakdown, I mean, because, and, and have an understanding this time next year, which will probably be May, right, or, when it expires, when, after, what, '24, what, May '24?
No, the one that we are right now will expire just September 30th, 2023. The one we're applying for will end September 30th, 2024.
Okay, that, but that's when it expires, and that's the last one we can do.
That's the last one we can do.
So, but right now, actually, we just need $30,000?
No, we got it, right now, we just have to, that's gonna be the increase.
That's what I'm saying.
Which will be in the budget challenges.
The match for this year, for October '22 to September '23, is $104,928. That's the match.
I mean, I would say submit it, but you gotta understand two things, as far as, my opinion, this is my opinion. It can go, it's gonna go away completely probably next year. It might, right? Might not, even be lucky to find some money somewhere, you know, or find another grant or whatever. But I think that right now, we probably need to submit the, just, just to be safe, submit the resolution, right, for the application. And see what happens, and by that time, give us a chance to kind of look at what's, what's out there. Talk with Dale, see what Dale has on his back pocket, anything.
Not much anymore, right Dale? That back pocket's pretty lean.
It's pretty lean with what we're coming up with.
Commissioner, I just wanted to say, we don't just do court appointments. It sounds like that's all we do. We don't just do court appointments. All the no charges and dismissals, those, about, in one week, we have 89 pages, front and back, of no charges and dismissals that we email every single attorney. There's a lot of times where we've caught that they're in jail, and the jail didn't know that that case was dismissed or no charged. So, we go through each and every dismissal and no charge to make sure they're not in jail. We have, there's been people in Aransas County that their case has been no charged 15 days ago, and they're sitting in Aransas County wasting county money, that, that's another thing we do. We mail out two applications for the defendant, I think that, right now, as of yesterday, Commissioner, there was only 14 defendants in jail without an attorney. Every other defendant had a court-appointed attorney or a retained attorney. We have another coordinator that goes to the jail to visit with the inmates if they don't have an attorney, and ask, you know, what they plan on doing.
I, I don't question that you do your job extremely well, nor do I question that the public defender's office is gonna do their job extremely well. What I question is how we're gonna keep paying for all this when these grant monies go away, because every idea we hear up here is usually awesome, but they all cost money, and how do we pay for them, and where do we get the money? And it all comes off the taxpayers' back, and it's just, I don't, I'm not in any way, shape, or form questioning how, how well you do your job. I just, I just think we've got so much money that's fixing to fall off because of all this ARPA and grants and all this other stuff. We haven't collected COVID money that the former county judge swore up and down we were gonna get it all collected, and we're $2 million in the hole there. We got all kinds of problems that we didn't have before when this started. And, and right now, we're just looking at things a lot closer. We're taking our time, we're being slower, like we're supposed to. And so, some of this stuff is getting a little more attention than just getting ram-rodded through like it was before. So, please don't take it as anything, any, anything other than, I, I just don't, and this isn't gonna be the last one. It's, I'm not picking on y'all, this isn't gonna be the last one. There's gonna be another five or six grants that we're gonna do the same thing to or on, and it's just getting tough to keep finding money, because I don't want to keep raising taxes.
Okay, understood.
But thank you for your work.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So, do we have a motion on this item? What do you guys want to do? Move forward with the application?
Where would the $30,000 come from, Dale? $30,000, where they're gonna come from?
General fund.
General fund. We match all grants from the general fund.
Do we have a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just gonna make a motion, go ahead.
Oh, yes, thank you. I know, our budget is very extensive, but do you have any way of keeping track of savings, right? There's vacancies that we haven't filled, there's certain initiatives that we haven't started, but, that were approved for fiscal year '22, '23. So, do we have an estimate? Do you have an idea of what those savings are in the general fund? And kind of match it to this? Because, I mean, I hear what, what the court is saying, right? There's, there's a limit, but this, this is, even if this is duplication of services, we, we owe it, when we're required for indigent services, right? We need to provide that, and I just think if it were my family member, I'd want them to be able to have that access. And I know we all would, but we gotta look at the cost, but I, I, I gotta believe that we are saving money somehow, somewhere, that we're not paying certain salaries or other office furniture, things like that, that we haven't actualized yet. So, is there a savings, and if so, how much? I mean, do you feel that we can cover this? What's, what's your recommendation on this?
I could, without a thorough review of this, I, I know we are, have some salary savings, but however, some of the, because we have a lot of vacancies, but a lot of vacancies are in the jail, and when you go to jail, then that overcomes, because that, that's overshot by now, a lot of people are working overtime. So, there is one item that, that we weren't aware of when we first started this year, is when, when the Treasury started raising the rates, we now are earning 4.5% interest on our, our investments. Last month, we transferred $155,000 from ARPA funds into the general fund, which we can. So, we have some additional revenue, but the rates aren't gonna be there forever. They will come down soon, and we need to make sure that the balance are. The other savings is there, but we, 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 we know we have a balance, a budget requirement that says we must maintain 25% of our revenue as a reserve. And last year, when, when I bring the numbers to you, we lost $500,000 from our, so our funds went down from 25 to 24.9, so we went down instead of going up, which we, which I informed you we wouldn't, and we did. But the, the interest helped cushion that blow a little bit. So, do we have savings? Yes. What I recommended totally of, of covering only a small $60,000, we could cover that, but there, as Commissioner Chesney says, there are gonna be more.
Sure.
And we tried to work with the grants department where they submit information to us on, here's the estimated grants we plan to get. So, we try to budget some of them through the general fund, and we have budgeted some, but we don't budget all. But, so we have a little bit of cushion there too, so. And we always carry a little bit of a contentious appropriation in our budget to make sure we have funds that'll, as you, as you need it. But as you say, if we put this now, if this something continues on, then we have to factor it into it next year. So, could we do this one? Yes, but there, there are more, more lying cutting.
And, and I get it, I mean, I wanna, I don't wanna kick the can down the road. I mean, it's, that's what we're doing, and I, I get it. And we've had lengthy discussions about the ARPA funding coming to roost, where we need to cover that, and the, the monies that we thought we would recoup from, for COVID costs that we haven't. And so, that puts us in a bind, so I know we're in a difficult situation, but, yeah, I, I, I would definitely like to see this covered for this year. I, I, I wanna make sure we recognize that we don't want to duplicate services, but, gosh, I mean, is this gonna break the bank? No, right? But if we, we're asked several times enough, it's gonna add up to a, to a large amount. I, I get that.
Well, my concern is when we are coming up our next year, we know, as, as Commissioner Chesney's saying, we were funding a lot of stuff through ARPA, and some of it has to do with law enforcement. They're, they're, we're in the negotiations now, and we get the process of, of coming in and working with y'all to tell, tell you what they're asking for, what we were proposing.
Be ready.
Be, be ready.
Be ready.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be surprising.
Be ready.
And this, we are covered this year, just so you know. This goes through this year, okay?
I got you, I did, just, then, you know, really philosophically, we all need to look then at, at our spending and every project that we do. I mean, there's, there's money there, you know, can we cut off a wing for a, you know, for a new facility or renovations that we want to do in certain areas? That's something for us to consider. I mean, it, it, you know, to me, at least our first obligation is to meet the basic needs of the county, and all that other, all the other stuff is, I don't wanna say fluff, but it's, it's more that we want to contribute to the community in different and special ways, but I think we, we all need to consider it as well. And, and I think I hear from the col, my colleagues, when we spend so much time during consent agenda, scrutinizing these invoices, because we want to make sure that we're paying exactly what we should be, not a penny more, because it all adds up. So, I know we're all doing our part, and we all kind of have our areas of specialty and focus and passion that we, we focus on. You know, I just, I see this one, and I see, gosh, I want to make sure that we continue it and, and into the next year, right? Because we've been going on for, this is year four or going into year five? What is this, Anna?
One, two, three.
Going to year four.
Fourth year.
Going fourth year.
So, this, we've already done the three, so, all right.
And Commissioner, as you, as you mentioned, if we need some renovations of this, do this renovation of here. We have ARPA funds now, we need to try to get those where it's funded there, but we gotta remember, if we do something, and now we have to maintain it afterwards, so.
And what are the increases?
I think the infrastructure we can do, because it's a one-time spent, we don't have to worry about paying it back. But if you need to hire somebody, then we gotta keep that person, now we gotta pay for that person.
Correct, and as well, if, 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 if you're adding and renovating buildings or building new buildings, then you have to know the cost of maintaining the building after the, after you build it.
What, what are the increases for?
Pardon me?
What are the, why are we gonna be paying more? Are there a lot of additional costs in this department, too?
No, this is the way the grant operates.
Right, but are there additional costs associated with the employees? Are we hiring more people? Is there, are there raises involved?
It has been for two coordinators, all the, from beginning till now, and supplies and training. That's, that's the basic ones. It's the same amount.
Their money go down, ours has to come up.
Now, Commissioner, you are correct, in the last few years, we have had collective bargaining, we have COLAs and other salary increases, so there are some small salary increases for, for those positions.
For those positions, yes. And I think the basic thing we need to do when moving forward in the next year, and the situation we're in, is to watch for these grants and any matching funds. When it's no cost to the county, those sound a whole lot better, but these 20% to 50 to 60 and on up, those are the things.
Well, as much I'm, as much as I'm against this, I'm gonna vote, my motion will be that we fund it this year. You know, but then, you know, next year, I'm, I'm telling you ladies, you're doing a great job, but it might just go away completely.
Now, as Anna was saying, where we, we funded a, a little bit less this year, but we, we, we're paying $104,000 this year. This $139 is for next fiscal year, ought to have that as part of the budget, so will be an increase there, so. So, this $139 is for '23, '24, which starts in October.
Yeah, this is for next year.
Right.
Meaning, you're funding it for a whole nother year and a half, because we've still got to the rest of this year. Then this grant would go for another year, so...
It's in September.
I, I mean, at some point, we gotta stop saying no, and today's my day, so, I mean, I may be the only one, but I, I can't, I can't do these anymore. I mean, I, this is, it's, we, we, like I said, everything that, everything that...
Do we have a motion for this?
Well, no, it's, I don't think I'll get a second, I'll just vote no.
So, we need a, we need a motion in a second.
I don't have a motion, another motion to, motion to not submit, I'm sure it'll die, but, I mean, I'll just...
Commissioner Gonzalez, did you have the motion?
A motion that we would finish this year.
To finish this year out. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, or all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item Public Works, 3C1. Receive a presentation from CLK Architects and Associates regarding the medical examiners. Right off the bat, say you're within budget or under. Sorry.
Come back tomorrow.
Under the gun.
It's not a good day if you're not.
Yeah, there is no over-budget, so don't even, don't even come up if it's over-budget. I'm not, man, I'm really in a bad mood today, so. I'm not even angry anymore. I got to eat and everything, I don't know, what the heck?
I, I get, excuse me.
Which one?
It's the, the one that says preliminary.
It should be two files.
Well, maybe it's just one. Just open that one.
No, I'm, I've, I've got too many things open, which I'm gonna go to, hold on.
Commissioners, I am, this, I am, this is Javier Huerta with CLK Architects. I got Dr. Fagan with me from Medical Examiners. We're gonna talk to you about what we've done here in the last couple of months regarding the medical examiner's renovation and or addition. Yes, ma'am, did you find it? No, that's not my, that's not my drive.
3C1. 3C1.
Yeah, there you go. Open the one that says preliminary.
Preliminary.
I have to keep a copy, because people keep asking me to email them to them. So, I always copy one over.
Okay. Hospital district?
Row one.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Make sure we're on the right thing.
Okay, so Dr. Fagan, in our office, we have been working on on the development of the preliminary plans for the medical examiners. We 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 basically developed a plan that, you know, based on our budget, based on our budget, we could execute and be able to meet our needs. Currently, what we're planning to do, and I'm not I'm just going to give you a brief history, but the idea is is to take the existing facility. There's about five thousand square feet of the existing facility, and we're going to renovate that and convert that area into office space. And so therefore, the dollars that we're going to use on on the project for renovation is going to be less. On the addition, so if you don't mind, can you go to the next page? One more, right there. That is a complete plan of what the medical examiner's office would be like. What we've done is we've taken, again, in consultation with Dr. Fagan and and other the experiences from his his staff, we created a program of requirements for the building. And within the square footage that we had planned for, we have set set aside approximately, I think we're right at, I'm going to say thirteen thousand square feet. And yeah, it's thirteen thousand eight hundred square feet. That amount of square feet with the new addition and the existing renovation, we believe we're we're tracking right in our budget for the construction of the project. Specifically, what is what is, you know, the numbers? We don't we don't have details as far as cost because this is a preliminary plan. But based on dollars or square feet of new addition and and renovation, we should should I be talking about numbers specifically?
I like how you're going.
What's that?
You're doing fine how you're going. We don't need the numbers. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, don't don't talk about numbers. I like where you're going.
Okay, square feet are all good. So based on the square feet and and and, you know, that we've done, we met his requirements as far as what he needs for for the department. We have every single room. We have every single space that he needs. We're going to have space for all his staff. We don't have any fluff. We're right where we need to be to meet the needs of our county. And we are tracking well with our dollar per square foot cost for this building. We will have essentially the capacity to see, and Dr. Fagan can can speak of that, and the capacity to see patients is directly related of patients, cases.
Patients.
The patients.
I'm a physician. I do treat patients.
The capacity to see cases, patients, will be directly related to the his staffing and the doctors that he has on staff. But but this would be well suited for the county. And what we've done is, if you go to the next page, we've also left in the concept one more, and then we'll come back to that one. That one right there. So what we also are planning is just to leave space for the future. So in our request to the hospital district for property, we're going to request enough property that we can have space for a future addition when and should that ever be necessary. That will not be part of this project, but there will be space for it and, you know, where we can add on to this facility in the future. The specifics of what could that be? That would be, you know, probably times would, you know, change and and requirements will change in the future. But we're basically just allocating a placeholder where that could be done in the future. If you go to one more.
I'm sorry, Javier.
Yes, sir.
With what you have now, there there is already a designated area for future expansion. You don't if you don't go to the hospital district to add some more, there's already an area there you can use for an expansion, right?
So if you if you look at the area the area right now, the new plan that you're looking at the screen, the the item in the item in.
Future area in the light blue.
Yes, that's basically.
That's already part of the property there.
That's already part of the property. But so I was talking to Johnny Hip. That was something that we did before, that we were asking for that. I'm not sure if we got approval. I just need to confirm with Johnny Hip that we got approval for to take that portion of the land.
No, that yes, but but he also mentioned that we would also consider another section if we're going to use this one first, right?
Yes.
So we, yeah.
There's an opportunity for more land there if necessary in the future with the hospital district.
Yes, yes. But I need to confirm, and I I talked to him. I need to confirm that that has been voted on and approved by the hospital district for.
For the blue part.
For the blue part.
Yes, okay.
And then if you go back, one more. So the plan for this facility is what we're going to do is do the addition. It's about eight thousand square feet addition for the autopsy suite. The autopsy suite will be built while the current autopsy and administration will continue to carry on. The new addition will be done, will be completed. Once that's completed, then the existing area that you see there in blue, that's the existing autopsy area, would move into the new area. We would renovate the blue area for the administration office, excuse me, for the offices, for the doctors and the supporting staff. So once that area is completed, then the area in red moves to the blue, and the red area gets renovated. So this project is essentially three phases because we have to move people to different areas in order for us to do the renovation. But this keeps the operation going all the time. We don't have to displace them.
Without hesitation.
Yes, and but other than 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 the the timing, the timing, probably the 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 addition will probably take about twelve to fourteen months. The renovation will take approximately six months to to complete. And it's just going to be depend on on how fast we can we can get through moving, you know, those those departments over, you know, whether that extends a little bit more or not.
This was allocated with ARPA funds, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So this has to be finished by December twenty-sixth.
Yes, no, no.
Yes, okay. What you were saying, twelve to fourteen months and another six months? I'm like, that's getting pretty close.
Yes. No, we should. So we're going to go out for bids in the summer.
Yes.
And so we'd be so summer twenty-three, we should be in the building. I'm going to say fall of twenty-four in in the first part, the autopsy. And then from there, fall twenty-four, I mean, we have twelve months before the 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 next fiscal year.
Okay.
Summer twenty-fifth. Yes, ma'am. Dr. Fagan, would you like to?
So this will be a dramatic and much-needed revitalization for the office. So it'll much better serve the the population for Innuisus County and our partner counties. It will give us the ability to handle a lot more cases in a much more timely manner. We've already had the blueprint to add the third doctor. This will actually allow us to have the facility to really use, I mean, at least two full-time doctors so that when we do arrive on Monday and have fifteen cases, that we can get through those in a much more expeditious manner and get them released to families in a much faster turnaround time. So this facility has a lot better controlled access, a lot better for security. This has a lot more resources for the staff and the population we serve, particularly with, I mean, even things, things like having dedicated family meeting space. As opposed to right now, our conference room is the conference room, the break room, the family meeting room. It's the multipurpose. As opposed to this facility is going to have actual dedicated space for each of those purposes. So it's with the very generous support of this Commissioner's Court that this is possible, and we are very appreciative of this.
We appreciate the update and excited to get started. Questions? Anybody else or anything? No, thank you both for being here today.
You had me on budget.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Item number two, discuss and consider the selection of Hanson Professional Services for the development of an affected property assessment report, APAR for Innuisus County, and authorize the execution of an engineering service contract.
Yes, Judge, excuse me. This is for Polo Works is recommending Hanson Professional Services for the for the affected area on Upper Road, and we're recommending Hanson to be the engineer on the project.
That was part of the TCUQ thing with the.
Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you.
The the next one, Judge, is we're recommending executing the contract with Hanson. I think the total dollar amount is ninety-three thousand eight thirty, and this will be out of our right-of-way road monies that were allocated last week. I mean, a couple of weeks ago.
That is still on C two, but a different motion and vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
The contract's ready?
Yes, sir.
Jimmy's reviewed it?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Motion to execute.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
Thank you, Juan.
Item D one. Discuss and consider award and execution of master service contracts. Michael, Mr. Robinson?
Okay, so we're finally at the point where we're ready to execute the master service contracts with our engineers under the ARPA programs. The first number one is is actually from the second pass when we we went out to bid two different times. And so on the second pass, we're recommending.
Motion to pass. We have a motion and a second. Any other?
And these have all been vetted by the county attorney? They're all good to go? Yes, they were they were authored by the county attorney's office. We worked really closely with Lulu and Jeff Schmidt and Kent Brown. Everybody collaborated very well. I feel we have a very sound process, and for the first time in the county's history, we've we've ever really done a master service agreement for engineering services. And this is going to pay off in the future when we do our regular master service agreements for engineers, and we get a pool going each year, and that'll save you guys time as you put projects out during the year.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. On D two is a master service contract again.
Yeah, this one's for thirty-two, twenty-one dash twenty-two Architectural Services. This one's going to be for Levy Dykema P LLC and Turner Ramirez and Associates.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. And then one more.
Yeah, this was the this was the original timeout for the engineering services, Freezing Nichols Incorporated and Hanson Professional Services Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Item number four, discuss and consider award and execution of a contract with Odessa Pumps and Equipment.
So this is for two new six-inch diesel-powered water pumps with trailers, which we could really use with the rain. We've got the contract has been reviewed by the county attorney's office. We have ETA for arrival on this around ninety days plus and recommend approval.
Funding?
This is ARPA.
ARPA funds.
Oh, ARPA, you said it. I'm sorry. You heard it. I heard it. My bad. Motion to.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item number five, discuss and consider conditional selection for IFB number three, two-two-nine S two-three Hazel Basemar Park new restroom building.
So on this one, Judge, we received multiple bids. The low bidder was Brizo Construction LLC in the amount of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand and ninety dollars. The expenses to be paid with eleven fifteen waiver funds, and we recommend approval. We also have a letter of recommendation from Ardua as well.
I'm excited to say.
I think they're.
Wait, wait, wait. There's a change to this. We were thinking instead of using the eleven fifteen waiver money to use ARPA money for that, and she said we don't have to go back out and rebid or anything.
Why not? Why not eleven fifteen?
Because.
It's more flexible money. You can use it for other things.
Eleven fifteen can be used on anything, and we still have ARPA contingency money, and it's we need to allocate that also.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, I mean, if you're looking for projects, I can help find some. But I'm just wondering, what if eleven fifteens is sitting there too, right?
So the court the court previously had indicated that they wanted to use eleven fifteen waiver funds, and that's the manner in which I bid this out.
So it would change if you had to redo this?
No, it is used under the lost revenue. We have a contract. It doesn't include a two CFR, but you still have can use ARPA under lost revenue. And then the numbers that I got from Lulu, we have like seven million available under the lost revenue.
And the ARPA money that we can use.
Seven million that hadn't been allocated.
Yes.
No way. We don't have seven million not allocated.
That's no, we do.
Yes.
Would some of it came back or what?
No.
No, the corner to to allocate that money. We have.
Total, about ten.
That's correct. It's four point five million under contingency fund that the court put five million, and then we use five hundred thousand, so that's four point five million. And we still have the 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 ten million on lost under lost revenue.
We may have ten million that you can use, but we don't have ten million cash. In other words.
No, we do.
No, yes, we do. We have seventy-two. Part of the seventy-two million, the ten million is part of that seventy-two million that we received.
It has not been.
We but we allocated a bunch of that out. I I'd like to see that break down again because I I knew we set aside the five, and we've spent some of that. We we spent that some some of that contingency a couple of times, but I'm I'm not understanding.
I'm going to I'm going to provide you the the document that Lulu has, and she has one for the lost revenue when it shows how much we have on the lost revenue and how much is left of that one.
What?
She broke it down. We have that much in there.
Okay, so we have so we as a court have not allocated seven million dollars?
She's arrived. Yeah.
I'm just asking.
They're wanting to change from eleven fifteen.
And how much is in the eleven fifteen waiver?
We have probably around like four million, Dell.
Four million?
Four million, but the ARPA needs to be used too, and the eleven fifteen waivers can be spent a lot more flexible.
How is eleven fifteen more flexible? I thought that had a lot of restrictions on it.
No, it doesn't.
At one time, it did have restrictions, but with the changing and the way they did the waiver, they took away all of the restrictions.
They waived all the restrictions?
They took away all the restrictions, yes.
In eleven fifteen waiver?
Yes.
So you can spend it on.
Anything.
That, yeah. Yeah, and we got that from the person.
Where you have to put some funds for, but majority of it is, as long as it fits some, your policies, it can be used for those, yes.
But what does it, what does it have to fit? What does eleven-fifteen waiver have to fit? Like, in other words, I can't believe it's just giving-
It's more flexible. Eleven-fifteen waiver is more flexible. So when we had it before, it was more like diabetes and all those kind of public health, right? You can still use it for that, but then they tell you like, hey, is it remaining what we had before? So you can, the court can decide to do with that money whatever. It's the best for the county. So that's why right now it's just fair to use ARPA, which is, we have to locate it. We have to spend it.
And we have a deadline to spend it, so, yes.
And we have deadlines for that.
Is that, Teresa, what's, do you have that?
I don't do the ARPA.
Oh, okay.
Lulu?
I'm not involved in ARPA.
Lulu can just have-
But eleven-fifteen waiver idea is correct. We really should kind of hold, hold our, hold down on eleven-fifteen waiver monies because a lot of stuff that's popping up, those funds are available because they're not restrictive right now.
And we've already squared up with the city on eleven-fifteen because there was some, remember that meeting we had on that? Did we get that all squared up too, where they were?
Well, it's going to be, that's going to be the, for next twenty-three, what is, what do you, twenty-three, twenty-four budget to see what the court wants to do. It wants to allocate more money to the city. That's a different conversation.
Saying there were some, remember we had that meeting with them where we had some backup, they had some, that back million dollars or something like that, but we got it worked out. I can't remember. It's been so while, long ago.
Well, they were billing incorrectly on their quarterly amounts, but that's all taken care of.
That has been taken care of.
And they still received funds under different kind of, different funding source for waiver.
Yes.
Okay. I missed that the eleven-fifteen waiver has become a giveaway plan. Didn't know that. Sorry. I thought that were rules that you had to do.
And moving forward with this, if we can use ARPA money, we are, or that's what we would like to use on this. Is that a motion from anybody? Do we need to?
And this, again, is just lost revenue. It's a different bucket in ARPA.
But we still only have a total, we only got, we got seventy million dollars.
Correct.
No matter how we categorize it, we've spent, we've spent, allocated, give to commissioners, judge, whatever, X amount. You're saying of that seventy million, sixty-three million has been allocated and we got seven million unallocated.
That's correct.
I come in here.
Okay, just give me that.
And then she has, and then I think she can provide again the numbers again.
I mean, I just haven't seen them.
Right. And so we just don't want to put everything under the ten million, then we have to put it in a certain category for it to qualify. So we're trying to be careful with lost revenue, but in this case, since it's a PARG, it is allowed. However, the supplementary conditions were not implemented, not knowing that we were going to encounter this.
But they're not required under the lost revenue category?
Correct. Under lost revenue doesn't-
That's why you would have to put it-
What was the total on this one?
Because it could be just under regular ARPA funds.
Correct. Yeah, I just want to make sure that stipulation, everybody understands, the lost revenue is the category in which the supplementary conditions, or the traditional full-on, all ARPA compliant documents are not required for that section of those funds. If you're going to spend the regular ARPA monies, which are not from lost revenue, then I would have to bid it out with all of the correct ARPA process, which is what we'll do in the medical examiner's construction project.
But this project, you don't have to rebid, right?
According to, according to Ide and Lulu, this meets the requirements. You're just going to identify, your motion should just include a reference to the funding source being out of the lost revenue portion of ARPA funds.
And we look into this and we, what we tag, just to get the facts from everything.
So, so moved. One second. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to change, I guess, the funding and accept the contract or who, the bid, who was the award? I'm sorry, I lost.
So you're going to recommend for conditional selection, Brizo Construction LLC.
Yeah, Brizo.
For IFB thirty-two twenty-nine dash twenty-three Hazel Bazemore Park New Restroom Building in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand and ninety dollars, with the expense to be paid from ARPA lost revenue funds.
That motion. We have the motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. On item number six is very similar. We want to possibly do the same thing with that, so, before you start spelling everything out.
Okay, on this one, we received four proposals. One of the proposals provided two bids, which is non-responsive, and so we cannot consider that bid. We, of the remaining bids, the apparent low bidder is Progressive Structures Incorporated. And we're recommending conditional selection of Progressive Structures for IFB number thirty-two thirty-one dash twenty-three Hazel Bazemore Splash Pad Project Precinct One in the amount of four-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and seventeen cents to be paid with ARPA lost revenue funds.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Judges, judges, want to thank everybody having to do getting this done. It's been a long time coming, and I appreciate you guys doing the hard work.
Man, precinct one is racking it up today.
I know.
She's a little weak, man.
It's coming with a change.
Ah, we, let's talk about Hilltop too. Let's just do it all today.
At first it was a peer.
Hey, man, I got gigged for all mine, so I was scared about it.
Hey, moving on to item E with the auditor. Three E. One, approve the budget change order number twelve for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
For budget change order number twelve, there's only one item. It's moving funds between oh-one-eighty and oh-one-eighty-one for permitting services, for backload services that they have. At the item, the funds are available for this, this transfer. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I submit budget change number twelve for your acceptance and approval.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Item number two, approve the monthly expense report for January, February, March twenty-twenty-three and the unreconciled P-card transactions for October twenty-twenty-two to March twenty-twenty-three. And I, I say unreconciled with a big capital U because that was a big question we, I had when I got this agenda item.
Yes, we'll go through that and explain what, what's going on.
Yes, please.
This is just trying to catch you up on our expense report. I'm going to go over March since it's the most current balances. There are a few errors in the report, so some of the balances that are shown for elections is not correct, so we're going to fix those. So we want to address those, the problems. These are showing your balances for this fiscal year as halfway through. The first one that is technically over budget is my department because we've had a few changes in some staff and some, I had to pay out some for retirement and some other stuff for balances. I'm not that far off, but also because we had to function, workday through this, this function as well, we just hadn't done some budget change orders. So that's one of the areas. The next one in question is on page thirteen. Thirteen is legal aid. As we know, legal aid, we do the rental agreement with legal aid towards the middle of the year. So it's now all hundred percent spent, so that's the only thing causing that to be over budget. And that's, that happens every year at this time. On page twenty, you show the balances of the sheriff's office being a little bit over, and that's just, a lot of it is because of other expenses that they've had. And they've had to bring in some other services to cover their vacancies that they had in every department that they had to try to maintain their facility. The last page I want to go to is page twenty-five. You'll see where the total general fund is right at sixty percent remaining and we're at sixty percent of the year. So we're doing right at where we should be, but I would like to have that, a little bit less of that. But some of these are because of our transfers. We transferred out money quicker to some departments to make sure their operating funds are there. The other departments, the funds are relatively quick and relatively in balances. That's the report for March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. I can answer any question you might have. If not, I'll go to the unreconciled accounts.
Go to the unreconciled accounts.
Today we bring into you the, what we call unreconciled transactions. When anyone uses their credit card, we pull the information from the, our bank daily and put it into our system. Our system then notifies these individuals that they, they have transactions pending. Transactions pending require that, we cannot post some of these transactions because of our old system. When we get our new system, this won't be an issue because they'll let some of us do this. But this is basically, and we currently work with Michael on this, and he notifies them constantly of this, of what is pending, what is done. So you go through each of the items and we try, I think we put them in, in a name order, so you'll see a few balances for unreconciled. Now, when we ran, we ran this report on April eighteenth, some of these may have already been reconciled. I can't say they're all still pending, but I would say a majority of them still are. Michael, if you want to try to bring up how you notify these individuals of these unreconciling balances, because we need to try to get these done. And some of these are anywhere from thirty to sixty days old.
Yeah, so we periodically send out a reminder notice to the cardholders. I usually work with Harry, and he'll provide a list to me, and then we'll send some targeted emails. In some cases, I'll make a personal visit to the department to get those ferreted out. I believe that a significant portion of these have been worked through.
Since your email that you sent out after the phone call that I gave you.
Yeah, I had some good response on that, so anticipate we'll have a much shorter list next time around.
Well, I strongly suggest in, in the future as well, when they have P-cards, I know you have to get a receipt. At anywhere you use it, you get a receipt. So there's really no excuse for sixty days of this not being turned in or anything like that. So the threat of turning the card off really helped. I think if we did that a few times and turned it off, it would be extremely effective.
We've done that in the past. We'll do it again.
And the new system will allow us more simplified, so as you said, instead of having to go into your office and scan this, our new system will let you take an image of your receipt and put it in, and then you're done. So, but this requires us reconciliation, and our old system, because everything's tied together, we can't post some of these transactions into our balances until it's all done. So sometimes it holds us up two or three months, and that's where you'll hear Michael and we'll constantly be calling Michael, well, this needs to be done, this needs to be done, we need to talk to this, talk to these people. And, because sometimes they don't, it's us.
Understand.
But we want to just show you what's happening, and we, hopefully, when the new system comes out, this won't be as thick as it is now.
Prevalent in the future, yes.
So that's the monthly reports for January, February, and March of twenty-twenty-three, and the unreconciled P-card report for October to March of twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have a motion to accept this?
So-
Approve. We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you very much, Dale. Number three, discuss and consider approval of funding source for the cost of transporting inmates out of county for the sheriff's office and related matters.
Yeah, they came to my office and we would try to work some scenarios up because at first time we were trying to get the funding out of ARPA. But unfortunately, how we currently do this, we can't do the funding out of ARPA. So we try to find additional ways of doing this, and I believe we, I have a way, if y'all would agree with this. If y'all remember when we first started this.
Why can't we, why can't we do this? Because this was truly because of-
Because there's no contract.
There's no contract and it wasn't bid.
It was not a contract.
Okay, so why, we couldn't?
I think it was, if it was bid, it was, nobody received it, but y'all want to?
I mean-
We don't have a contract, Commissioner.
Totally related to COVID, though. I mean, we're all backed up in all these prisons. I mean, this was all-
But we would have to have contract.
We don't have a contract.
These are in county.
And we don't have a contract because why?
Michael can explain about that.
There's-
Just the book.
They're backed up, Michael.
There's basically two different kinds of transports. Some are the in-county, and then the others, you know, that dealt with the overcrowding, went to Aransas County and Victoria County. So we're talking about two different things here.
But they're still-
Well, the trans, my understanding is that the transports to Aransas County and Victoria County are done by our own people in a jail. The ones that are coming in county are done by external contractors.
Okay, well, this is for transporting inmates out of county, so I thought we were, am I misunderstanding?
So my understanding from this was that the portion that would have qualified would be the portion of transporting to these outside locations. The county does their own transport to those locations, so we have no outside expenses to recoup for that particular transport.
Okay, I'm just, I've got to wonder if this item is posted right.
Why can't the county slip theirs?
Because it says out of county. It says out of county. I thought this was, we were just doing out of county discussion, sorry.
It is out of county. It's-
No, no, but this item was posted as discuss and consider approval of funding for out of county for sheriff's and related matters. But if you just said there's nothing to recoup, then what are we doing? You just said there's nothing to recoup.
On the, on the specific transport to these additional sites that the sheriff is utilizing for the inmates that didn't fit here, is the way my understanding was.
But this is, you just, okay.
And so the portion that he still needs help with is just general transporting of inmates.
In county or out of county?
Some, some of our inmates are overflow and they are stored in adjacent counties. That transportation, sorry, my apologies, is done by the sheriff's own staff.
Right, I get that.
The other transport that is taken care of by outside entities is the picking up of someone with a warrant or a hold that is all over the place.
In other counties and other states. That's the funding we need. The extra funding we need is for the transport companies to bring them from out of state, new place detainers out of state or in other counties, and they bring them back for us because we don't have the manpower. We do some of the surrounding area. We do. But there's some that, they have to go overnight. If they go to El Paso, Lubbock, those are overnight trips.
And the reason we're crowded, though, is still the COVID backlog. A lot of it, right?
Yes, sir.
So I'm trying to understand why this doesn't qualify as-
The problem is that we don't have a contract.
I get it. So why don't we go get one?
This was bid out. There were no responsive bids. The companies that take care of these, this transport, there are two, is my understanding. They are not interested in having a contract, and so this particular method-
Or you don't give them the job, they'll be interested in a contract.
Well, that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard. So I, I mean, so they do it, but they don't want a contract, so they're screwing us because we can't get the money that we need to get because we could use other funds.
From what I understand, they don't want the contract because of the fluctuating of prices of the fuel, and they just-
We can put stuff like that. We can, you can put-
In a contract, you can have fluctuations.
So they're charging whatever they want.
I don't know.
You can, but you can put that, I don't know, you wouldn't, I mean, but you can put those kind of things in a contract that has-
I wonder if we could renegotiate.
Fuel fluctuations. If they're not wanting a contract because of fuel fluctuations, that's, that's hampering our ability to fund this in a way we need to fund it.
I know that purchasing has been through trying to do this rounds and rounds of it, and that's how it ended up inside of the purchasing policy. Is because it was that qualified because of no responsive bids.
Okay, when we get somebody from out of town, who's, under whose orders are they bringing them from out of town?
We have ten days from when we place the detainer in another county or another state, and it, we have to go pick them up within that time, so.
Are you ordered by the court, by the court?
Yes, because they have a warrant, sir. They have a felony or misdemeanor warrant. Or both. Yes, sir.
And those inmates that are bringing, they don't pay for the, they don't pay-
Yes, sir. Everything goes to their court costs. We charge everything to the inmate.
Will we get the money back?
So I get that we got a problem today.
We don't get the money even when they send them to jail. They're prisoners.
We've got to have a contract.
Some of the guys got money, probably.
Yeah, we've got to have a-
We did get some reimbursements from the Texas Department of Corrections. We did, because of COVID, we, they had like a grant, and we are getting money back. When we go, when we take some prisoners to Dominguez, Plain State, we got eighteen thousand. So we're getting a little bit back.
We've got to figure out a way to have a contract and go through procurement so that we can use other kinds of funding besides the general fund. So if that means that we have to put out a contract that says there'll be fluctuations in fuel or whatever, or we've got to find someone else to do this because this is really hampering us in the ability to do what we need to do.
I think if y'all would allow Dale to indicate what solution he found to this problem that we're facing right now.
As we, as Commissioner, you were saying, right now, everything's being funded by the general fund. I've tried to figure out some ways of providing funds to the general fund, so it's not a large hit to them. As we remember, when we first started our software system, some funds had to be paid for by the general fund, and we allowed Coastal, Public Works or the Road Fund to use some of the funding we brought in for the, for the software by reducing their capital outlay, then we, then we wouldn't have to transfer funds to them in that amount. I'm recommending the same issue. So if we need funds, we have additional funds in one-twenty that we can let them use capital outlay as well as Coastal Parks capital outlay, and that could be anywhere from, from one-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred thousand dollars. And if you allow this to be due, we can move this to ARPA lost revenue and let them use it for capital expense. And then we would not have to transfer the funds from the general fund to one-eighty or one-twenty in those amounts. And then we have the funds available to pay for whatever we need for this funding until a solution is resolved.
And that's a short-term solution to a long-term problem. We still need a contract. Okay, so that's fine. If that fixes it for now. But we've got to go back to these people and explain to them that if we don't go through these procurement processes and have these contracts in place, then it limits us on how we can sometimes use funds, these and other funds that we might get, right? I mean, we don't, because, so somehow we've got to go work with these people and say, okay, what is it that, is it a fuel fluctuation clause? Great. I'm not going to say that fast three times because I'll get in trouble, but if that's what we need to put in the contract, then let's do that. If this fixes it for now, and this is, you're saying it checks out, it's okay with ARPA, okay, but I don't think it fixes this long term. Whatever we got to do to get it done.
I don't believe somebody would want a contract.
So are you going to do the motion for that, then?
I'm not going to do it, but I'll support it. I don't even understand what he just said.
Me either. Can you state it and I'll do it?
Other than it works.
We, we, we found funding sources available and other means to be out of ARPA funds that will transfer money from ARPA funds to Coastal Parks as well as Roden Bridge to be able to expense capital expenses, and then the general fund will not have to reimburse those funds. And then that fund, that fund will be available to pay for, for income.
We need to check if we can transfer funds from ARPA to, I mean-
I'm not transferring, I'm not transferring funds from ARPA.
Okay, because of what you mentioned. Okay.
Capital expense.
Someone needs to, we need to, someone needs to write this up in a motion so that we can digest it, because I couldn't make that motion if I tried. So I think we can maybe come back, Judge, if you want to, but I don't even, I still don't even really know what we're-
I don't believe you can have a contract.
Okay, let's, if someone will write that down for us, how we need to do- Okay, let's, if someone will write that down for us, how we need to do that and make sure it's legal.
He's basically sta, he's basically stating that we're going to use lost, we're, I don't know, they can come back and write it down, but I just want to get it on the record.
Understand.
What, what he's trying to do, I believe, is to have an expense, a capital expense that does qualify for ARPA to be paid with loss revenue, ARPA funds.
Money over here.
And now it's because the, the Coastal Parks and Public Works won't need those funds to be transferred out of general fund, that then they can be paid, uh, down to resolve the issue with the sheriff's transport costs.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Carrie, you got it?
I have, yes. You're a great translator. I appreciate it.
It's, it's actually, I understood, but I just couldn't say it.
Do we have to do this today or can we actually like think about this one? Is this like crucial today?
I think it's crucial for they need the funds right away. So I think she has it on video. Can you get it from?
Work on that right now.
I, I, I seriously don't know what you're, I need someone to write it down so I can read it.
Okay, I make the motion to use ARPA funds for the capital expenditures with the coastal parks. And that will free up funds from.
And Roden Bridge.
And Roden Bridge. And that frees funds in the general revenue that we can then use to pay for this for the transport.
Correct.
And so that is my motion. I'm sticking to it. Oh, yeah. And the ARPA will go towards loss revenue. Yes, the ARPA funds that are going to capital expenditures.
How much is it?
Do we know how much it is? Wasn't it 600,000? 600,000, yes.
So this isn't going to short anybody's funds anywhere, right?
No, no, this is.
I'm trusting you, Dale. I'm going to second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, we're already in a bind for the 600. Is that going to be enough then? Are we going to be clear for the sheriff for transporting? I mean, I mean, that's already invoices that are out. Are we good?
Right. So we need six. Yeah.
We have to have six today.
And Lulu, you're saying this works and Jeff, you're saying this is legal?
Yes.
On the record? No, on the record, because I'm just, I'm going on faith here.
Well, the others are, they're okay. They're okay funds if you use them that way.
Honestly, this is the first time I've heard of this scenario doing this. But what, what he's proposing, it does sound like it will fly. Yes, it's, it'll work. All you're doing is moving money around.
Yeah, that's called, well, we.
Yeah, we won't go there.
But you're doing it legally.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm looking for.
It is coming on the advice of our attorney and our auditor. So I want that in the record, please.
What we're doing is we're making qualified ARPA expenses.
That's exactly right. Qualified ARPA expenses. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I guess.
No guessing on the end.
Mr. Gonzalez, you voting?
Ego.
Is that your, is that your vote, sir?
Based on advice of counsel.
Yeah, we're all doing this based on the end.
We, counsel has heard this for the first time today and that is.
You can't hedge. This is either a yea or nay. You're either signing off on it or you're not.
They did. Y'all signed off on it happy.
I mean, Jeff signed off on it. If you're not signing off on it, I'm not voting for it.
Look into it first before we.
I'll be happy to look into it further, but the idea that Dale has proposed is sound.
Capital expenses through.
Right. All he's doing, all he's doing is making legitimate expenses to be paid by, right, from ARPA funds.
Yes.
Which you can do. That's what he's proposing.
His money on the other end. So it is not a big deal.
Does the motion made by the judge legal and does it follow the ARPA rules?
The, the scenario, yes, the motion sounds to me like it is sound.
Okay. Lulu, do you agree with that?
Yes.
As far as the coastal park and all these, they need to, they need to come to me and Jeff to verify that it qualifies under a certain category and that there is a contractual agreement.
Loss revenues will work. Yes.
Okay, I'll pass. I'll, I'll vote for it subject to that being, that that occurred, to her, that occurring.
Okay.
If you're, if you'll take that as part of your motion, then subject to.
I'll take that as part of the motion. As long as it qualifies through ARPA, then everything moves forward.
It all needs to be sent to Lulu and Jeff for final review.
And so we have the motion and the second. And now it looks like we have a unanimous vote because Commissioner Gonzalez finally voted. So thank you very much. Thank you guys very much for being here. Um, on item number four, discuss and consider authorizing and approving change order number one to the contract with Alight Solutions for Enterprise Source Planning Software and Replacement of Time Clogs in order to add automated Workday Support Services.
Yes, Your Honor, what we're trying to do, this is a, a testing module of Alight that will help us to test the, uh, surface projects we have with Workday. There is a change order number one of 138,360. However, the funds are already allocated in funds. So there will be no additional cost to the county.
No cost. Very good. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. And number five, item number five, discuss and consider allowing the district attorney's office to utilize salary savings in 3520 and 5510, 5110 to supplement professional services, special professional services and for the remainder of the fiscal year in the amount not to exceed 75,000. Um, and.
Judge, on this one, uh, it's a little different than the others. I appreciate the, uh, district attorney's office working with the auditor and HR on this. So I just want to make sure I understand it. Basically, uh, the other positions which are creating new positions, um, the policy of the court and the law of the court or the law has been that if it doesn't have a general fund changed, then it, and it's doable. And I think that's what these next five or four or five will do. Uh, this one is different. It's taking the salary savings that they haven't used on certain positions and just shifting it to the, um, professional services slash special personal services, which that's completely acceptable. But that's also just a line item change and has no cost to the general fund.
There's several vacancies and this is trying to bring in, uh, additional personnel to help fill out the, the cost. So the, they have the savings to, to qualify for this.
Some things of that nature, right?
You know, I have a question on that.
Okay.
I, I understand all the rest of them and, and because everything, all the rest of them gives us a $14,000 savings. Once, at the end of the day, we, we still got a little savings, $14,000. This one here is not a savings. But I, I don't think we have ever done where we moved money to professional services, special revenue services, personnel services. Where are the savings there? What are we, why are we moving the money from?
They have several vacancies and the vacancies allow them to, because they have to hire a contract personnel. This is, it's an outside contract professional. So this, that's where, this is where the funds would be. So they're not actually hiring an employee. They're hiring a, a, contract labor.
This is not to give the bonuses to people. This is total outside contract labor to help with the overload that y'all have in the office.
But didn't they have contract labor?
We have hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in salary savings. We're asking to use 75 of it. It's a transfer from one line item in our budget to another line item in our budget because we're never going to use all of that 250,000 we have just right now, which is going to continue to increase. We have to have attorneys that are contractual. We call them special prosecutors. They are assistant district attorneys in other counties. They have been former employees here. Michelle Putman and Rachel Maskowitz. They've done intake with us before. They're already set up through Odyssey. And they do intake because we have zero misdemeanor intake attorneys at this time. And we only have one felony intake attorney. And we have to do the intake in order to continue to move the cases.
What you're saying is you have too much money on professional services.
Yes, that's where they get paid out of.
Next year, you shouldn't get that much money from professional services?
No, it'll go back to the original budget amount. This is just for this fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, I think all they're doing is shifting.
No, I know they're shifting, but I, you know, I don't know. We had a, was a policy on that or not? I'm not su, I don't remember.
Every single budget year, I've come to this court and I've asked to use my salary savings to supplement others. And every year this court has said yes.
Like I said, I don't have a problem with number one, two, three, and four in the bottom. There are, you know, you're removing some. That's a salary savings. Although your savings are using, you're going to hire somebody else. So instead of 45,000 savings, now we have 14,000 dollars savings because you're going to hire a new employee. You know, so I, I don't have, and I really don't have a problem with that. Over here, but over here, I don't know where we have a savings, although you might have that money set aside. You haven't spent it. But that's money you had set aside for professional services that you might not use. And you think, you don't think you're going to use. I don't know if you're going to use it or not. I don't know if you need it or not. Between now and October, you're not going to need that money for.
It's not just for them. We also pay medical examiners to come in and provide expert testimony out of professional services when we have to call in Dr. Chandru to come and testify in our murder cases because we can't put Dr. Shaker on. And we can't put Dr. Fagan because we don't want all of the misgivings and illegal activity that went on in the ME's office to infiltrate our homicide cases now. So it also pays for the phlebotomists when we do all the no refusal weekends. So it's more than just, um, and that money is money that was earmarked for employees we didn't have prior to today's date. So even if we filled every single position in our office tomorrow miraculously, I would have enough in my salary to cover them through the rest of this fiscal year because I'm asking to use money from all the people we didn't have from the beginning of the fiscal year till now.
I understand that. But you, and the savings you have, the salary savings in 3520, 5110, what, those are the vacancies you have?
Those are the vacancies we've had since the beginning of the fiscal year till now.
But those vacancies, using that money, but those vacancies are not going away. So you want, you're going to, what I'm trying to feature, but you're only, you're going to only do this, this year, right?
Yes, sir.
You're not going to go use that money next year again? Those 75,000 dollars, you're not going to take it from there again?
Well, not unless we get into next fiscal year and we're still 15 attorneys down and I'm still having to do contract labor. But in terms of the budget I'm going to submit, it's going to be pretty much the exact same as the budget we submitted this year, plus asking, of course, for raises that we're not going to get.
Well, maybe you can cut back a couple of people, add it to the 75,000.
Pardon, sir?
Take away two people, two vacancies and add it to the professional services. And we'll bring more money into that, into that area for next year. I'm just saying, you know, if you're not going to use it, it's going to be sitting there.
No, it goes back to the general fund. I think last year, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars that we gave back to the county out of our general fund because we didn't use it due to salary savings. And this year is going to be the same thing. Y'all are going to get, uh, probably 200,000 dollars from us in salary savings again at the end of this fiscal year, if not more. Our, our office has never been over budget. Our office has never had to come and ask you to increase our budget. We certainly haven't asked you to find 600,000 dollars for us. So we're asking to use money that's already allocated to our office for the very emergent situation we have because we are 15 lawyers down.
I understand. I just want to make sure, is it on the, we're doing the right thing here or no? Because it's totally different from the other one through four, right? Teresa, I mean, are we okay with this kind of transaction here versus the other four?
Commissioner, she's, she's, um, the budgeted salaries, the budgeted, uh, salaries for that department for the high number of vacancies, that's the money that she's talking about. The funds are there because they don't have employees in that position. Uh, in the past, we did not allow the departments to use the salary savings from vacant positions on, you know, like emergency situations like this. Uh, and then it's usually been allowed. But that's probably a practice y'all need to think about looking at again because it goes towards the fund balance. I mean, it's salary savings, but it goes back to help your fund balance.
And that's what I thought. Cause I know in the past we had some issues with that. So, but you know, if we say we, we can do it. I guess we can do it. But like you said, we need to go back and relook at that, how we're going to do it from now on.
For the future.
Okay, yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Okay.
We have a motion and a second to, um, allow, uh, the remainder, um, the professional services, um, 75,000 to use, um, in the DA's office. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Item F1, discuss and consider creating a trial court coordinator and witness supervisor position. These are new positions at pay group 2201 to assist with the coordination of the heavy trial docket to be funded by the permanent elimination of one assistant DA misdemeanor attorney one position.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Um, number two, discuss and consider reclassifying the two assistant DA felony attorney, five child unit prosecutor positions, which are currently at pay group 37 to ADA um, six violent and high profile at pay group 39 positions. This would be funded by the permanent elimination of one assistant DA misdemeanor attorney two position. Salary savings for the remaining year.
Second.
Any other discussion? Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Um, and I appreciate that because those women should have been paid the same if this is. Um, item number three, discuss and consider creating an admin secretary three position at a pay group 2101 to be funded with the surplus funds remaining from the permanent elimination of the assistant DA misdemeanor attorney one position and the assistant DA misdemeanor attorney two position to fund the trial coordinator and reclassification of the felony five child unit prosecutors.
So moved.
Second.
I understand this is a wash. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Um, item number four, discuss and consider the approval of reclassifying positions within the Oasis County.
That's not mine. So may I?
Oh, oh, sorry. Yes, ma'am.
You're on the roll.
Okay, I thought it was just going. Um, item number four, discuss and consider the approval of reclassifying positions within the Oasis County Clerk's Treasury and Collection Department to be funded by deletion of the senior accounting assistant position in the Treasury Department 1170 effective pay period beginning May 13th, 2023. And I believe in your packets, we got something from Melinda this morning that showed that this would be fine on the amounts and stuff.
And that's the savings or what?
Yes.
Yes, uh huh.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign.
Thank you.
And then item number five, accept for record purposes a resignation of Oasis County Emergency Management Coordinator. Discuss and consider the revision of the job description of the emergency management coordinator position. Discuss and consider authorizing the human resources to post the position and related matters. Um, and your packets, I did receive, and I know that is under the county judge, the resignation. He, his last day will be the end of May. And because we are coming up on June and hurricane season, I thought it was vitally important for us to get moving and get this position interviewed for and hopefully have some great, um, candidates show up. Um, there is in your packet, we did with the help of, um, the new HR, um, director and everything reword the, um, job description. And we would like to move forward with those changes and, um, ask him to post the position. So.
So moved, Judge.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. And unless I am missing something, do we have any adjournments in memory or did I forget something? Wait, we have one more? Oh, okay. We have adjournments in memory, please. Go ahead.
It is with great sadness to announce the passing of Janay Suzanne Cabelas. Uh, Janay Cabelas, age 39, of Corpus Christi, left this world on Wednesday, April 19th, 2023. She was a loving daughter, mother, sister, cousin, and friend of many. And, uh, many of you, uh, may have, uh, or may know her mother, Janice Cabelas, who is a member of our, um, mental health oversight, public defenders, uh, board. So our, certainly our condolences go to Janice and her family. She was a graduate of Mary Carroll High School, class of 2002, and was employed by Laura Bodine Financial and worked as an office manager for the past 20 years. She loved the beach, listening to music and cherishing time with her family and friends. She is survived by many. She is, uh, preceded in death by her father, Janice Cabelas, um, or excuse me, she is preceded in death by her father. Um, or, excuse me, she is preceded in death by her father, Jason Cabelas, grandmother's Carolyn Sheehan and Evang, Evangeline Benji Strong, un, Uncle Richard Strong, and her loving best friend, Jennifer Scott. A memorial service will be held at St. John's United Methodist Church on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, at two PM in the Community Life Building. Her departure has left a void in the hearts of her family and friends. She will be forever remembered for her beautiful smile, her sense of humor, her kind spirit, and the love she shared with those around her. May her soul rest in peace. Uh, condolences to the, uh, Cabelas family and the loss of Janey.
Absolutely. Are there any others? Anyone? Yes, sir. Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, Michael, uh, Mike Hendry Holtzow. Best, best prayers to the family for his passing. Mike, uh, was a very devoted, uh, family man. He was born on October sixteenth, nineteen forty-
Commissioner, I want to turn the mic.
Can you talk to him? Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you, sorry.
He was, uh, raised on a farm outside, uh, in Oklahoma, where he was, he graduated one of thirteen students from Pioneer School. He attended Oklahoma State University, earning both bachelor's and master's of science degree in mechanical engineering. He later earned an MBA from Texas A&amp;M University in Corpus Christi. Mike, uh, love of life was boundless with his wife of fifty years. Travel over the United States. In addition to travel, relaxation for Mike was playing the stock market, golfing, attending Spurs game, watching the Oklahoma State Cowboys, and time with pets, especially my Merkel and Sydney. He will be missed by his family, friends, and, uh, her prayers and condolences go to the Holtzow family. The other one is, um, Richard Garza. It is with great sadness that the family of Richard Garza Senior announces his passing on April the second, two thousand and three, at the age of eighty-five. Richard was born on August twentieth, nineteen thirty-seven, to Oscar Garza Senior and Margarita Longoria Garza in Corpus Christi. He was raised in Corpus Christi, Texas. Richard graduated from WBA High School in nineteen fifty-six and attended Dillmore College. He enlisted in the United States Army and served as a private first class from nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen sixty. Richard married Rosie Madrigal, Madrigal was with the Madrigal pre-named family. Garza, Garza, on June twenty-fifth, nineteen sixty-one, Rosie was the love of his life, and he shared her through fifty-seven years of marriage. Richard was a partner of the Agnes Furniture Sales and Garza Furniture Store. He was a loving husband, father, brother, uncle, fa, grandfather, and great-grandchild, great-grandfather. Was always enjoyed family gatherings and shared stories. He's one who made you laugh so hard that you would cry. He will be remembered for his kindness, selfishness, and de, and devotion to God and family. He will be missed by the family. Our prayers and condolences go to the family. That's what I have here, is a very, uh, kind of a dear friend of a lot of people, very well-known in his community. And they, that's Art Cortez Delgado. Who called him his coach, Delgado. With great sadness, we announced the passing of Art Cortez Delgado on April sixth, twenty twenty-three, at the age of eighty-one. Art was born in Corpus Christi on December the eighteenth, nineteen forty-one, to Dario and, to Dario and Neves Delgado. Proceeded in, in death by his parents, Dario and Neves Delgado. Brothers Dario Guadalupe, Miguel, Rudy, Santos, Louvenna, and sister Maria Louvenna, Elvira Garza, and Josephine Ramon, and daughter Neves Delgado. Survived by his wife Patricia, daughter Belinda, sons Art and Adrian, grandsons Dario, Dante, Koa, granddaughters Biana, Biana, Brianna, Alexandra, Elena, Jacqueline, and Cassandra. The grandchildren Thorne, Elias, Lincoln, and Delilah. Special thanks go out to all the people that participated, especially the pallbearers, and the help with, with the funeral. Art was a very, uh, likable person. Uh, he, uh, worked for the, uh, school district until he retired CCISD, and then continued to do some part-time work with CCISD. He loved to hunt. He liked to have a little ranch he liked to go to, where he would find very relaxing time with his wife and family. So Art, uh, will be missed, not only by family, but friends and, and associates. Our prayers and condolences go out to the family. And, uh, may the good Lord pray for him always. Amen. That's it.
Absolutely. Does anyone else have any? No, we certainly keep all of these families in our prayers, and thank you. It is four oh eight, and I will accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? The motion is adjourned.